Session, regular city council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. And we do have a full agenda this evening. Specifically, we have two agenda items that I anticipate will be important in terms of both deliberation and action and where we will have outsiders and representatives in attendance. And that is for the variance for the barn on Brody Lane. And also when we get to the deliberation for the future contract for the Sustainable Food Center. And when we get close, just as a reminder Sylvia, when we get somewhere 15 to 30 minutes from where we anticipate, SFC will come up. If you would send a text message to Joy so that she can dial in.
Got it.
And with that, we are at citizen and public communication. If those of you who wish to speak, if you would please raise your hand if you want to speak to an item that is not on tonight's agenda. And I did see there were four comments on OpenGov that did come late in the afternoon. So council members, if you have a chance, if you would jump on there. It looked like all four comments were in relation to agenda item number eight, which is the variance. Just buying a little time in case there are any residents who wish to speak. Please raise your hand if you want to speak during citizen comments. Okay, we are moving on to the reports for the evening. And let's start with, let me unmute. Carolyn, you are unmuted, so if you would also just mute yourself as needed. And Sylvia, do you see the chief on the call?
Yes, he's on the call.
Is he, is he under a different name or phoned in?
He's under Lynn Carter.
Thank you. I had not forgotten his name. I just don't see it. But thank you. It's been a day.
No, no, no.
It's been that kind of day.
I don't know mine.
Okay, well then let's, okay, I'll keep an eye out for him. So Sylvia, if you would start with the administration report and then Carolyn, if you would follow up with the public works report and then I'll pull Chief Carter in if I see him pop back on.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor. In the administrative report, you will find a revenue and sales tax update, which takes us through almost the complete fiscal year. That is also updated on your dashboard and it has revenue and sales tax broken by category, year-to-date, and totals. So if anybody would have any questions on that. The Public Works Director posting has been live on the city's webpage. It's also live on TML. It's live on Indeed. We anticipate leaving it open for two weeks and Indeed expects us to get 30 to 40 applicants based on a number of criteria that they have. Ongoing projects or plans. We are continuing the ERW pond repairs, which that was a project that was already underway as we started doing budget and it was funded. Transition of our engineering firm, Freeland Turk has already begun task orders and we have prioritized some of the things council considered important, the lift station, the pond, sunset, and a couple of other projects. The municipal court prosecutor has also begun transition. That is now the Knight Law Firm. And then in City Hall, the prior live streaming was purchased by Granicus and we had some upgrades to do. That was approved in last year's budget. It's taken us that long to get upgraded. And then with that comes a new agenda tool that will be a little bit more useful as we begin to post and record things so folks are able to actually go to the agenda item itself and listen to the recording as opposed to trying to find it in the video like we do now. Our final software migration, well, our information migration from MIP, which is our existing financial software, was completed by OpenGov. And so now our financial reports are on an auto update as opposed to having to stop, run the report, and then upload that information into OpenGov. So that's a much more efficient way to handle our information. That's lots of data that gets handled every single day. Staff, with the exception of Ray Jean and I, have completed the move to the Public Works Building. It went pretty quickly, pretty seamlessly. We took that as an opportunity to also take some inventory and Susanna again has continued to scan items that are now being kept in electronic format as a way to, as council directed, get away from the offsite storage and get a plan together for scanning and storage. As of the posting of this agenda, we had no resident information requests and I'm reiterating that we have no committee meetings until this month in October. And I believe we already have a couple for sure scheduled. I'll defer to Matt on that.
And then to add to that, tonight, we will be hopefully confirming content for any remaining committee meetings. So it'll be very clear to the liaison chair and staff member what work, if any council would like them to complete this calendar year. Hopefully, we will make that decision tonight.
Correct.
And I didn't hear you mention Meet the Candidates. Did you mention it because that?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Meet the Candidates is October 13th, a week from today. We will be utilizing last year's format, Survey Monkey, where residents can submit a question. The moderator, Tom Seidel, puts it in a program and it spits out a random question and that's how they will be asked. We are having a candidate meeting with the moderator. We're still working on a time for that to happen this week so they can iron out some last logistical information and then we should be ready for next Tuesday.
Great. Do we have any questions for the city administrators' report? And then Sylvia, before Carolyn, before you take over, would you put up the mayor's dashboard just so I can point out? If you'll just start with the tab. So the first thing, if you'll just leave it there for a second. So there's four items in that top section, lines five, six, seven, and eight. Eight, hopefully, tonight will be approved, which will be sort of the closure to the street survey that we did a few months ago. What I'm hoping council will do tonight is adopt the official chart, which shows what items are going to not have any further action at this time, what items will have additional staff research with a possible recommendation coming back, and which items will have immediate direction to staff to complete or improve. So council members, hopefully, we can get that done tonight, in which case I'll link it there. The other three, five, six, and seven, should be linked today or tomorrow. I got a little bit hung up because of the additional issues we had with the sign notices that went out. The two items that are red, the tree trimming along 290, this is something that the police chief had brought up at least two times as something that he wanted us to address as a city, to help him both for cleanliness, presentability, but also for transient activity to be as, to not invite people to want to set up tents or anything of that nature in or behind any of our bushes. So Sylvia has been given the directive from me to complete that. And then the TDS changes that were implemented through the adoption of our budget, mainly the change of how we will do bulk pickup, which is that residents will now have two opportunities to do bulk pickup and that they will be able to schedule those at their convenience through TDS. And the change to having recycle pickup be every week instead of every other week. I will have Sylvia send out a notice to the community of exactly when that will roll out and specifically for the bulk pickup to provide very clear directions for how residents can utilize that change in service. Could you switch to the agenda planning? So we only have two called meetings before the election, one, which is Meet the Candidates next week. Of course, there will be no deliberation or action from council, even though it is a called meeting. And then on the 20th, that will be our final meeting. As you can see, we've already got a handful of things on there. Anything we don't complete tonight will be on there. And then, of course, anything new that comes in for sponsorship will get parked underneath line 12. I don't anticipate that we will have a special called meeting between now and then, but that is, of course, always a possibility. And Carol, oh, actually, last thing, would you flip to tab four? So this is a new tab that was just added. I did mention this at the last meeting. Charles Goyette, this addresses something that I think I addressed to you at the last meeting. So this is the chart that I personally use from month to month to assess what percentage differences we're seeing in the different revenue streams. And of course, different council members, different, different residents, they have different ways of looking at the numbers to personally assess, especially during COVID, how our revenue is impacted and how it's bouncing back. So if anybody wants to know what, what's the mayor's rhyme or reason for how she views the state of revenue, I've now made the chart that is helpful to me public. And with that, Carolyn, if you want to take over and do the public works report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public Works Department has been pretty busy these last couple of weeks, doing a lot of stuff with the water system from monthly irrigation checks to meter reading, all of those types of activities that have been going on. We are hoping to get the ERW Water Quality Pond wall repaired and do some other work in the next coming weeks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions at this time.
Thank you, Carolyn. That was swift. Councilor Medicus, I see that your hand was already up. I'm not sure who you have a question for, but you have the floor.
Question for you, Mayor, on the agenda planning. We received the email on September 17th about the city administrators' review was supposed to be on the 1020 agenda. Which item is that that's listed?
It might not be on there. Oh, Administration, Employee Evaluation Summary, sorry, line 10, Evaluation of City Administrator for 2019-20.
Yeah. Okay, all right. And we have new, new forms for that and a process for that, so.
Yeah, and thank you for reminding me of that. So council members, you did receive an email from Sylvia. Today would be a really good day, today or tomorrow. If you didn't get that email, if you lost that email, if you have questions about what you're supposed to do, contact Sylvia or, or me. Or I would actually, if I had to pick another council member, I would say Councilmember Medicus might also be a good person to contact since she helped put together the bulk of what we approved this year. Do we have any other questions for staff? Councilor Medicus?
So Mayor, you want those completed and submitted before, is that?
So again, because we're doing it a little bit different, this is the first year in my 10-plus years where we're filling, where each council member is filling out their own evaluation. So I am, and I am very open to whatever process council members prefer. If you prefer to fill it out and submit it, and then, and then tell me, do you want it to be submitted to me and immediately shared with everybody so that we all get the benefit of the same amount of time to review it before? Or do we come in blind and everybody puts their evaluation on the table at the same time? I'm open to either one. I would appreciate, though, if you guys communicate what your preference is.
According to the process, I believe they're supposed to be combined into one.
Yeah, see, that's the, that's the second, even trickier step, which is, does everybody fill one out first so that they have an idea of what they think? Or do we, in the past, what would happen is we would just have an executive session and we would, we would literally fill it out sort of together. But it doesn't have to be done that way. So if there is a preference that one of you have, if everybody wants to fill one out and then we submit it to Ray Jean and then we come into the executive session and combine them into one, I'm fine with that. I, I really, as I stated before, don't have any sort of preference. I just want to make sure that we get it done since we're past the year mark.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I had another question. I thought, again, in the things that were approved, it was my memory and Councilmember Medicus can, can, probably has a stronger memory than I do, that we were having a meeting before we met with the city administrator to create our document. And I just want to make sure that we have time scheduled for that.
So in the past, that was done in executive session and that's where Roxy would have to weigh in as to what right council members have to do that with or without her present. My understanding, and I could just be wrong in my memory, was that we're not, like, that Sylvia has a right to be there for it. And Roxy, if you want to weigh in?
The, the way I recall is that on, when you're considering the evaluation, that is subject to executive session. You don't, that's an exception to the Open Meetings Act. You don't have to have an attorney there. But when you're talking about personnel items, the person does have the election to, to have it in public. I need to go look at it and see whether they have, whether in executive, executive session they can be in there and it not be public. I think that if you elect to be part of it, that I think that's like electing it as a public item. So.
Yes, if you would check on that, Roxy, because what we have done in the past was the, the way that Clay had presented it to me was that it can be an executive session, but that he has the right to request to be there and that he also is the one that has the right to ask that it be done publicly. So that it's the person being reviewed that can say, I want this to be done in the public.
Okay. The, the part that I just need to double check is whether it remains in the executive session and whether this, the city administrator can be, elect to be in that executive session without it being public. So I'll check on that.
Great. And so if, when you get the answer to that, if you would email it to all the council members so that we all get the same communication from you at the same time. And Councilmember Gonzalez? Yes, so that will be scheduled for 1020 and it will be done in executive session. And so, yes, for everybody to consider, that will be, my guess would be approximately one hour, give or take, of our meeting will be devoted towards that executive session with the goal being completing an evaluation of Sylvia.
Mayor, I have a concern about that because first, there's the creation of the document that is a shared document, which is, which is one thing. And then there's the sharing of it with the city administrators. There's, there are two parts to this evaluation. And to, to imagine that's all going to happen in one hour seems peculiar to me.
And I can't say anything to that, other than that's what we did every other year and it was always successful. There never was any issue. And so I feel comfortable doing that. I don't know what, and then in terms of you not wanting Sylvia there, I don't know what to do with that either because in the past, that's what we did. We came together as a group, we evaluated Clay, and then we would bring Clay in and share, openly share with him, not just the document, but openly all, with everybody in the same room, share our criticisms.
That is the same process that I remember. It's just different than the, than the last process we did. And that's, and that's what I expected was that we first had a conversation as, as I observed year after year that happened with Clay. And then we brought the person in and, and I just want to make sure there's time allowed for that where we create a group consensus and then have a discussion.
In the past, we did, that occurred, you know, usually within well, well under an hour. Usually, it was anywhere from 15 minutes to 30 minutes. And so my intention was to devote, or to at least loosely allocate an hour of our next meeting to that. And, and, and hopefully by sending you guys the document two weeks early and you've now had six months to sort of loosely prepare your notes, I would hope that we can come in and do it in an hour or less.
To Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Medicus?
I found my, my notes on what we actually approved on the evaluation procedure. And it basically says the mayor will ask council members to complete the form prior to the session. And then the mayor may ask the city administrator to complete a self-assessment, including a report on various city operations, issues, and matters pertinent to the governance and management of the organization. And then the mayor and council will meet in closed session to discuss the performance to assimilate the individual performance evaluations without the city administrator and then bring in the city administrator to discuss. So that's the process that we approved.
Thank you. And so that's what I would like you all to do. You were sent the document on the 17th. That gives you more than enough time. Please complete it and submit it to me in advance if you want. I don't need to see it in advance and we will then deliberate together in the executive session at the end of it, bringing Sylvia in. And Sylvia, yes, would you please fill out the self-evaluation, including areas, operational areas, as Councilor Medicus just outlined? If you would also provide that to council in advance of that executive session.
Will do.
Mayor, this is Roxy. Based on the procedure that was read by Councilmember Medicus, that is allowable. I, I just thought, I thought that you wanted the city administrator in there in the entire process, but that's, that's a, an allowable, under the law, process as Councilmember Medicus read that had been approved by the council. But just, just out of an abundance of caution, I'll double check and just confirm and send everybody an email in that regard.
Okay. And then would you also just make sure, since we're, I know there's sort of also the overriding rule that there are things you can do in an executive session, but since we're trying to get, we're not exactly voting on it, but the idea is we are creating one unified document, which creates the false assumption that there's going to be five people that agree, which we know that's not going to be the case. So any legal tools or parameters you can give to all of us as to, are we voting, not voting, or is it just that we collaborate and there is no official vote?
Okay. I'll, I'll provide you a, a parameters in how to do that.
Councilmember Rosen Garden? Councilmember Rosen Garden, it shows that you have a hot live mic, but if you're speaking, we are not hearing you. Now you're muted. Now you're live again. Sylvia, is it just me or are you hearing anything from Councilmember Rosen Garden?
No, I can't hear anything, but she does show a hot mic.
Yep. Okay. And Chief Carter, while we're waiting for Councilmember Rosen Garden, do you want to highlight any of the items from your admin report? Chief, you are self-muted. There you go.
Good evening. I think the most significant part of my public safety report is the new traffic plan at Sunset Valley Elementary. For this year, we have managed to route about two-thirds of the pickups. They're going to be on the west side of the school, the Master Sergeant Horgan side of the school. And then we're going to route traffic out to either through the Burger Stadium to 290 or back around through the stadium to Jones. And that should allow for about two-thirds of the vehicles to exit on that side rather than funneling back through Jones. I know that's going to make some of the residents happy on, that live on Jones and also the people that have to travel through there. Right now, about 25% of the students have started in-person classes at Sunset Valley. They're going to gradually ramp that up until we get full attendance. We've run into this week a few little glitches that have caused us to alter the plan a little bit, but ultimately, we want to move as much traffic as we can off of Jones so that we can keep the roadway open during drop-off and pickup.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Could you remind us of the, the additional hours for morning and afternoon, what the window is for the school?
Yes. Drop-off in the morning is between, the school opens at 7:30 for kids to actually go into the school, but the school zone is in effect at 7:15 to, 7:30 to 8:15. No, this, there's a kind of a queue that lines up about 7:15 or so. And no, no one's allowed into the school until exactly 7:30. And that causes some backup on Jones thus far. And then the pickup time is 1:30 to 3:30. And again, the school has its own COVID protocols, so not as many students are being released at the same time to, to their parents. So that's caused a few little glitches with us. We're going to work through that this week. We have several weeks until the law, all the students will arrive, so we have time to make changes to the plan. But again, the goal is going to be to get that traffic off of Jones this year.
And so you would, if you were just, if a resident was asking, what's the complete nose-to-tail, would you say 7:30 a.m. to what time in the morning where there's possible additional traffic?
There's going to be additional traffic between 7:15 to 7:45. That's when you will see the bulk of the traffic.
And then in the afternoon, what's the window?
1:30 till 3:15 is when you'll see the traffic, mostly between 3:00 and 3:15 is when you'll see queue lined up on Jones.
And then, and this year for the Montessori School, their drop-off is pretty close to that same window. And they used to do a much greater staggered pickup in the afternoon that ranged from like 12 to, I think, 5. And now all of their pickup in the afternoon is occurring between 12 and 3. So there actually is additional afternoon traffic there. And I noticed it today. And I also noticed that you guys had three, three cars out. So thank you for helping us with that.
Yeah, we're going to work on it for the next several weeks until we get it. There's some, the buses and some issues with that that are causing us to have to alter the plan a bit, but we're going to do what we can to keep that traffic off of Jones.
Thank you.
And we also are continuing our weekly cleanups of small camp, campsites around the shopping areas. We're pretty consistently catching these hidden campsites in and, in and around the shopping area. And we've been doing once weekly cleanups. I have been in contact with some of the management companies to get enforcement authorization and to have them send some cleanup crews to pick up trash behind their buildings as well. I, I talked to two company, two property managers today and they are working with me to get some junk crews to come and clean up behind their buildings.
And have they had any actual safety issues with patrons or employees being approached by anybody similar to what we had happen in the Villas a few weeks ago?
Not, not any more than the occasional one, no. It's mostly been, just because there's trash back there, I think that's attracted people who use the trash to make, use the cardboard boxes and everything to make campsites. Like, we haven't had any real incidents with many cust, any people approaching customers anymore than.
And then, and then my last question is, how much additional time would you say officers are spending either per week or per month, just an estimate, doing trash cleanup on 290 compared to before we had the homeless camps on the edge of the city?
Well, I'd say at least an additional six hours that we devote every Friday. I've been assigning our lieutenant to do that every Friday and.
I just want to point that out because sometimes we don't realize in our city because you, our staff is quick to be responsive to stuff. I have noticed it is an extensive amount of trash that shows up along 290. And then within a day or two, I'll see that it's improved. And so I assumed that was the PD doing that.
Yes, we're, we're out there every Friday and then when we see signs that a small camp is developing, we go ahead and clean that up on the spot.
And then while you're on that topic, would you summarize what I did see in an email to at least one resident this week about the, the PD is doing graffiti cleanup if it's within Sunset Valley jurisdiction and that that will then be woven into the resident citizen program?
Yes.
Public safety program?
We've been, one of our residents has been taking it upon himself to clean up graffiti, mostly to some of the utility boxes around town. But the officers also, when we see graffiti under the underpasses or along the underpass or on buildings, they make a report and then we go out and clean it. The goal, our goal as part of the Neighborhood Watch Program is to go, to have volunteers go and paint over graffiti whenever we get it on public buildings. to go, to have volunteers go and paint over graffiti whenever we get it on public buildings. One of our residents donated us about, let's say about 20 gallons of paint that we can use to paint over cement and other items, other graffiti in the city. But later this month, we should be able to kick off the Neighborhood Watch Program. And we will be asking for volunteers to kind of regularly help us schedule these graffiti cleanups. And then the trash pickups that we're doing, we'd like to try to get on those, to clean up some of the brush and some of the trash around the city more often. I mean, it seems to be that when we find places where a lot of debris is gathered or trash or boxes, inevitably we'll start getting shopping carts and then where it looks like people have started to make a home there. So we try to get on that as fast as we can. And sometimes a few days go by before we can get to it. So it'd be nice to schedule volunteers to kind of help us do that on some pretty regular, on a regular schedule.
Thank you. Councilmembers, we are now at agenda item number four, council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. And if you want to, it looks like maybe you had a question earlier. And then Councilmember Gonzalez, I'm not sure when your hand showed up. I've unmuted you, Councilmember Gonzalez, in case there was something that you, were you wanting to make a motion for consent? Or did you have an admin question?
I had an admin question just in case. I knew that there were several residents who had comment about the police report. And I just wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to talk of in case any of them were on and needed to do that.
We've already passed citizen comments for this evening. So if there are councilmembers who want to ask a question about the admin report, they're welcome to do so. Councilmember Rosengarden, did you have an admin question?
I did not.
Earlier. Do you have a motion on item number four?
On item number four, I move to approve on consent agenda items number five and number six.
We have a motion to approve on consent, item number five and item number six. Do we have a second? Councilmember Reitz, are you our second?
Yes, I am.
So we have a motion to approve on consent, item number five and item number six. Because we're, Ellen, I'm going to lower your hand and ask my next question, which is, councilmembers, if there's anybody who would like to remove either of those items, if you would please raise your hand, or if there are any councilmembers who would like to suggest any additions to that list. Right now, the motion is to approve on consent, items number five and item number six. Okay, councilmembers, I don't see any hands up. If you would please cast your vote in the chat feature. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. And Sylvia, if you would please read the vote back.
Okay, Councilmember Ellen, aye. Councilmember Reed, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We passed on consent, item number five. Approve the meeting minutes from the September 15th, 2020 regular meeting. And item number six, consider an act on a resolution appointing the Austin Chronicle as the city's official publication for fiscal year 2021. That now brings us to item number seven. Consider an act on a special, temporary special use permit for Doc's backyard for an expanded outdoor seating area. And I will allow staff to give a brief presentation.
Mayor Matt's going to handle this item.
Excellent. Matt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we have an application from Doc's Backyard, Charles Milligan. He's been, he's the owner and he's been operating Doc's for many years in Sunset Valley. He's worked with us to host several, or numerous actually, city events there, spring flings. And he is asking for a temporary special use permit to basically extend his patio area into the common areas adjacent outside his current patio, which would include the covered gazebo area, walkways that already have metal tables. All of these areas are owned by the shopping center. So he, with his application, he has approval from the landlord. He has paid his fee. And he also included his most recent health report from Austin Public Health, where he's, the restaurant scored a 99 out of a possible 100. So they're doing really, really good, especially with everything going on with COVID. And Charles is actually here. He wanted to, to speak, I believe, to how this would really help his business. So I'm going to.
Charles, you've been unmuted, Charles. So if you want to unmute yourself, you can, you do have the floor.
I, thank you all. Hello and good evening. I just want to say, please, this would really help us out because of obviously the, the huge loss that we've had during, during COVID. And with us having such a large patio, that's really been the saving grace for us. And if we can extend our patio temporarily, it would, it would extremely help. Because I know there's the thought that you can raise your occupancy in, inside by 75%. But that truly is possibly, you cannot extend it by 75% if you're practicing social distance. It might look good on paper, but realistic, our inside seating is still extremely limited. So the use of having and extending our patio would be incredible for us.
Great. Thank you, Charles. And it's nice to hear your voice. It's nice to see that you actually even made it this far. We're happy to see that you're not announcing that you're closing.
I hope we will not. I'm, we're planning, we were, we were, we were going to come to you, to the city of Sunset Valley because we were hoping to possibly put at one time prior to COVID, because we were having our best year ever. And we were very excited. And we were saving money over the last year to hopefully come to you all to possibly put a little covering on that patio cover of ours. So we wouldn't just, so we wouldn't lose out on rain. And we had permission from the, the shopping center to come and address you all. But then when COVID came, luckily, we had that money stockpiled for a winter day. Because now we're tapped into that to keep us afloat. But I think we're going to get by. I think we're doing everything we can. I was fortunate, my managers, we did have to put some on furlough, but all the managers all took pay cuts just in order to, to keep the doors open. So I'm, I'm happy. I'm happy.
And aside from this, aside from this variance, only because we haven't had that many property owners come and speak to us at council meetings during, as we've come out of quarantine, is there anything else while you have the council's attention and you're on the record? Is there anything else that you think the city could do? Or to maybe give us a warning of things we shouldn't do in the coming months as we make decisions?
I, I think, I, I think what would really help us, and I even would think it would help the other tenants in our store, in our shopping center, is if that playground could come down and people could start utilizing it. Because you'll see centers all around that have their playgrounds down and, and are up and running. And we could help disinfect it by using the, the disinfectant that we use for our tables and all. We would be more than happy to help out in, in sanitizing it, but we would.
And when you say come, Charles, when you say, Charles, when you say come down, you don't mean take the playground down. You mean allow children to use it.
Yes, ma'am, to take down the caution tape, the fence. I'm the one that, that called originally when, when COVID came because I thought it wouldn't be a good idea to have kids on it. But now I think people are getting a little bit more comfortable. And I, you know, unfortunately, families do put their kids over that fence and we try to talk to them. And then we've already been blasted on social media that we've tried to enforce people not utilizing that. But I think there's now, it would be great if the city would think about possibly removing that cautionary fence just to open it up, just to bring more life into that shopping center.
Okay. And Carolyn, did you, I see you had your hand up. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I've had several emails over the past week, I'm asking about the playground as well. So I will echo Charles's comment there.
And so, Charles, I would just say, since I have two kids that visit playgrounds every week, I think that my only concern would be, as I've witnessed how some places are doing it better than others, would be, it would be nice if you could require the children wear masks. And then I will then add, it's very hard to get children to wear masks. And so that would be my only caveat, would be it'd be nice if we could maybe limit the number of children you have out there so not have it be, you know, 100 kids all on the playground at the same time. And having then, you can't really social distance, but if you could at least, if we could.
Yes, ma'am. If I could recommend maybe the city putting signs out, it would be hard for us to regulate. As we all know, with the little kids going to school, they have a hard time wearing a mask. But if we could, you know, maybe, maybe have a sign that would say, you know, please, if you would like to use this, please wear a mask. But we could definitely help try to regulate it. It would be a little hard because, but we would definitely help out if, if, Carolyn, if you would like our assistance, we can get a sprayer and, and we could show you the sandy solution that we use to spray all our tables down and, and everything else. And we could go out there a couple of times a day and spray that down easily.
Okay, then Sylvia, will you add this, since we'll be revisiting the commercial sign leniency that was post-COVID? Would you add this to, for council to consider and provide parameters if they want to reopen the playground on the October 20th agenda?
Yes, we'll do.
Great. Carolyn, was that it for your comment?
Yes, that was all, Mayor.
Okay, okay, great. Councilmember Rosengarden, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I was going to put this on agenda, but I didn't because I talked to Charles today. I also visited his location on Sunday. I had to do research a beer or two later. I noticed that all the tables were occupied. He's got four TVs now out on the patio, which makes it conducive for the football games. And so with that, I move that we allow, that we, we approve the, a lot, I'm looking to, for the statement of what it should say. Consider an act on a temporary special use permit for Doc's backyard for an expanded outdoor seating area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? And Karen, I've unmuted you. Sorry, Councilmember Medicus, I've unmuted you because I saw your hand was up.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Medicus, did you have any additional comments or questions?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Elliot, did you have any additional questions or comments?
No, my hand was raised to second it, the motion.
Thank, thank you. If there's anybody who has a question, comments, or comments from.
Mayor, I have a.
Yes, Matt.
Yes. So, and I, I have a feeling this will be approved. And what I told Charles is that, you know, temporary special use permits, according to the Land Development Code, they're only valid for 30 days. But what we've done in the past with, I believe it was PetSmart pet adoption. If this is approved and if it goes well, perhaps Charles could come back at a future meeting and apply for several permits at a time. You know, to extend the patio for, you know, several months at a time. So I just wanted to, to throw that out.
Yeah. And what I, I think that would be a good idea. What I would suggest, since we're about to have a change in council members, would be that we let this one stand at 30 days. And then when it comes back the next time, I think the way that I would present that would be that it's still for 30 days, but that it can be administratively approved for up to maybe 90 days, like three cycles. And that's where it would be up to Roxy to determine the proper parameter to do an extension that's beyond 30 days.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, councilmembers, please cast your vote via chat. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, if you would please read the vote back once you have it.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Elliot, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Reitz, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Charles, and good luck. And it sounds like we may be seeing you on the 20th if we revisit the playground issue and/or when you come back to extend this special use permit. This brings us now to item number eight. Consider an act on a variance to section 4.301B of the Land Development Code to allow for additional parking for the business located at 6218 Brody Lane, operating as The Barn. And similar to the last item, I will allow staff to present first. And then from there, I do see that Anita is in the room. So I'll then open it up to Anita if she wants to add to the presentation or if she wants to have her professional, if she has any professionals that are in attendance, if she would prefer to have them present. And so Sylvia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a request from Anita Dunn for a increased impervious cover. After last council meeting, went back, spoke to the, the professionals, both the engineer for the Duns as well as the city's engineer. There was a reduction in the original 48% requested. It is actually now 31.2%, but it's still an increase from the applicant's current 18%. So as you're aware, the city has limited jurisdiction within the ETJ in terms of codes. We do have control over the city's watershed and also signed sections of the Land Development Code. The applicant was seeking an impervious cover varying section 4.301. That was last amended in September of '09. And there is no reclassification calculation of existing impervious cover. That was one of the beginning discussions that we should consider crushed granite as impervious. Well, the calculations that have been had don't require us to deviate from our code at all on how we consider that impervious cover. So the council may authorize a variance when its opinion undue hardship will result from requiring strict compliance. And so the city, we are in a position right now that we are only managing, regulating the watershed portion of the particular code. The design of her pond, as per her engineer and our city engineer, says that the applicant's pond can handle the additional impervious cover that would be created by the additional parking spaces. The applicant did submit a letter on how they believe they have met the findings. Staff recommends approval based on the content of the pond having the ability to handle the impervious, the additional impervious cover that is created by the applicant's request. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and/or Anita.
Thank you. Anita, I show you in my meeting twice, and so I'm going to unmute both of them that I have for you. And it looks like the second one that I unmuted worked. Did you want to add to the presentation or do you have somebody else here or both that you'd like to present at this point?
Good evening. No, I don't really have anything to add. I think Sylvia did a good job of explaining it. And unfortunately, Ed Moore couldn't be here, which I considered is best we could do. The Sunset Valley engineer has already said it's good to go, then I really, probably his input is really not that much needed. So with that, I'll just pass it on back to you guys.
Okay, great. And so councilmembers, Anita is here if you have additional questions for the duration of this agenda item. And with that, councilmembers, before I move to public statements, are there any questions from councilmembers about the report? The recommendation or any of the information as presented this evening? Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. On page three, other considerations as follows. I think this is the staff, under staff recommendations. On number one, it says the property lies in the ETJ. And it's not subject to zoning or building codes, only watershed. And isn't it correct that the 18% is a watershed? Item?
Correct.
Not a zoning or a building code item?
Correct.
So I'm not sure that, that that's really relevant to number one, because we're looking at the watershed, not, not building codes or zoning. And the same thing with item two. That's governed by watershed, I believe, also, and not zoning. So we're really just looking at the watershed tonight, correct?
Correct.
So those two, I don't see.
So those two, I don't see a justification for. And then on number three, I think the concern that I've heard from residents is about the parking on the street. I'm not sure that there's a consensus among the residents and whether or not additional parking internally will address that and prohibit parking on the street. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Sylvia, is there anything in Councilmember Medicus' items that you want to address before I move to the next comment?
Um, no, other than, well, yeah, I say no other than, so the answer is yes. One of the, one of the items in the land development code and any zoning code or unified development code that we look at specifically in zoning is its compatibility with its neighbors. And although we do have mixed emotions among folks on Countrywide, and we've attended a meeting where I stated that in the emails to a council member and also at our last council meeting. Mrs. Dunn was going to have some of those neighbors who are in support be here at the meeting. I'm not sure how many of those are actually here. But unfortunately, that's not what we're here for. We're not here to govern the zoning nor the building code, which if you recall, my last, at the last meeting, my comment was, I'm not sure that 18 is even going to meet the required parking. And I, I don't have a leg to stand on for that because we don't govern the building side of that either. So I just wanted to point out that yes, we are talking about watershed variance only.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, mayor. I have two things just lest I forget. Joe Koisin is trying to get, be able to talk later and he's having trouble.
I'm working with him right now. Yeah, I'm talking to him right now.
That's, that's fine. And I'll quit talking to him and you've got the handle. So I agree with Councilmember Medicus. I don't see that what staff has put for the findings in one, two, or three are actually viable in terms of being reasonable assumptions. I, I think that we don't have one, two, or three. And if we don't have any of them, we can't do it. And I'm looking at three, that, that we don't have. The, so we don't, so I don't, I don't know how we can move forward on it. The, and that is just about 18% impervious cover. So if we're, if we're saying that that's the baseline, that doesn't, we don't have a solution here. So the, so, and for all the reasons that Councilmember Medicus said, but I don't even think that we have, if this finding was true on three, I don't, I have not heard that we have significant support to where the, this, I don't even, I don't know that that makes the finding anyway. But it, you know, for, to, to have solved a problem, I don't think we're necessarily solving a problem. I've actually heard that were they to increase, which is their business, which is what I hear is in the works, that the residents would in fact try to go for resident-only parking altogether on that street. And so it, it just sounds like we're potentially exacerbating, we have, exacerbating a situation with no solution and damaging our code. And so I, I don't, I don't see either the win for the city. And I don't see why, and I don't see the rationale for breaking our, our impervious cover of 18%. So, and I don't see where staff has provided that information.
So mayor, if I may, item number three, well, all of those items, as Councilmember Medicus stated, do only refer to watershed. And so item number three specifically, not detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, interest to other property in the area related to watershed. And that's where the engineers come in, that yes, it can handle or they believe can handle the additional impervious cover runoff. My comment there is related to what the property owners have expressed, both to myself, to the chief, and then in our, in our meeting with them. But those items, one, two, and three, actually all of those, again, I just want to remind folks, in relationship to the watershed, not to the zoning or the building codes. And we may want to apply zoning or building because that's, that's in our nature to say, well, it's going to bother the neighbors. But that's not what we're talking about here. And I've, I've tossed and turned over this, kicked it back and forth with the city attorney and other folks in the development area. Because we grant a number of variances throughout the year and we don't have a baseline, so to speak, for variances because they're all over the place. I don't really have anything other than what the code is specifically stating. And so that's what's in these findings.
Councilmember Gonzalez, did you want to add anything else before I moved to the next?
I'm still not clear. The code says that we have to stay at 18%. And so, and the reason that we have the 18% is because we determined as a city that that's, that's what the environment can bear. I'm at 13% personally. And so, and I can go up to a maximum of 18 if I make these criteria. But we haven't said in the commercial district that we can go up to a certain number if it meets this criteria. It says we can, we can do it up to 18%, which is where they are. And they've already done things to get themselves to 18%. So I don't understand where our legal, I mean, perhaps Roxy can, perhaps it would be better to have Roxy explain to us where our legal leg stands as to why we can go over 18% in this instance from this data.
No, it's the variance process, councilmember. That's their right.
Well, it says, it says up to 18%.
They have the right to apply and we cannot affect their due process in their application. They have the right to apply and have their case presented to the city council.
I, I would leave it to Roxy to explain to me how those two, how those things relate. Because I, it's not clear to me and I think it was not clear to Councilmember Medicus either.
Roxy, could you add your, your insight?
Yes, this variance is under chapter four of the land development code or the process that we're going through right now. It's section 4.103, variances and administrative approvals. And what this basically, this process says that the city council may authorize a variance from the regulations in the land development code when in its opinion undue hardship will result from the requiring strict compliance. And that's, that's, I've read it directly from the land development code and that's the process that we're in. And this is, this allows the application for the variance of the regulations that are set forth by the land development code. And this is with the regard to chapter four watershed development provisions. I hope that answers your question.
Do you, in, in your opinion, do these findings that are suggested by the, by the city administrator meet the criteria of those things on one, two, and three?
Councilmember Gonzalez, I cannot answer that question because the criteria set out by the land development code is approved by the council is in the city council's opinion as a whole.
Okay.
The discretion of the city council. And when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it from the legal perspective. And the discretion of the city council and the deliberation, as, you know, has to consider the, the, the criteria that's laid out. And if that's done and they find, you know, in their opinion, whether, you know, whether they want to grant it or deny it. Additionally.
Can I try to just say it a different way and then you say, yeah, that, that's right? And the way that I have explained it in the last two days is I've talked to residents who have asked a similar question to what Councilmember Gonzalez did, which is why if our rules say don't do it, why are we potentially allowing them to do it? It's, I'm just saying what Sylvia said, but in a different way and what you said in a different way. They have permission to ask for an exception. That is, and this falls under the subjective discretion of the council members. It doesn't mean they have to approve it. And actually, this, when we're approving variances, that is a big part of what we should be thinking about is how does approval of this variance weigh in on future potential variances that the council may have to decide on? And a variance approval doesn't mean that it's binding and it doesn't necessarily mean that you've created precedent. A council can approve a variance in one situation and not in the next. Is any of that wrong, Roxy?
No, the way that the variance process is, the threshold is within the opinion or in discretion of the city council. So that is correct.
Right. Yep. So it's, council, this is us, that doesn't mean we have to say yes just because they've asked. And it doesn't mean we have to say yes because staff has made a recommendation. But this is where it really is allowing council to be the deciders of whether this applicant deserves an exception to our rule. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you want to add anything before I move to the next councilmember?
Thank you, mayor. No.
Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. I have a series of questions for some of the people that may be in attendance. I assume, is our engineer in attendance?
I do not see, no, I do not see them.
Okay, I guess my question is, had the engineer been on the, on the call? He has looked at this pond. It is functioning the way it should function. And he is stating that it can handle the additional requested impervious cover. And my question would have been, tell me what the water quality would be before and after this additional? And I know that's a very binary question and I know it's a very basic question. But what would be the impact of this impervious cover on water quality before and after? That would be one question I would ask. The second question, comments and questions revolve around safety. And I'd ask the police chief on this, first of all, anything, is there any aspect of this request that would cause the police chief to say, hey, that's going to make it less safe or more safe? And then my third point, which I would also ask for input from the chief on this, but I'm part of it, is I look at this from the point of view of, you know, what is right for the people and what is right for their peace of mind and what is right for the folks that surround that area? And I, I guess my question is, will their life be better? And one of the concerns I have is I understand the value of, you know, taking cars off of Countrywide. I also understand the concern is if the additional parking leads to additional customers or addition type of venue. I don't want those residents to be confronted with music at 2:00 in the morning. Now, I, I don't believe Mrs. Dunn has any intention of that, but I have that as a topic of discussion. So those are my questions. What is the water quality impact here? Is the city engineer competent in his sign off on this? What is the safety issues, if any? Is it better or is it worse? And what are we doing or what can we do to preserve the peace of mind of the people that live in that area, both on Countrywide and some on Brody as well, which is a very close proximity? Those are my questions and my concerns. And so if anybody would like to volunteer to answer those, I'd appreciate it.
So councilmember Ellett, on the screen is the engineer's technical, technical information. So according to the engineer, the pond depth would increase 0.10 feet, so about one and a half inches and still outfall at or below existing conditions. It also does not appear in the very last sentence, the increase in impervious cover will create an adverse impact as it relates to stormwater discharge. And so if you recall, the pond on the Dunn's property has a re-irrigation system that's supposed to re-irrigate the site. They're rerouting some of that. So essentially, they create a zero discharge. That is specifically from Gary Freeland with Freeland Turk Engineers. And I can send this out to the council. This is the conversation Mrs. Dunn's engineer, myself, and our city engineer had.
Okay, thank you. Could the police chief comment on the safety issue?
Yes, yes. As far as safety, councilmember Ellett, if, 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 there's kind of two parts to this. Removing, I know that when we had the meeting with the residents along there, one of their big issues was parking on the street. If this removes people from, the vehicles from the street, that's going to prevent some of the disturbances after hours, some of the confrontations that have gone on with some of the residents. I don't know that it would have anything to do with the other issues that they have as far as disturbances and loud music and things like that. More parking will mean more business potentially, which I guess that's going to mean more outdoor concerts and things like that. So I, it's hard to say. It's going to solve some of the issue. Again, the street parking, but it may well add to the disturbances and noise complaints.
And there is no concern about this increasing or decreasing traffic backing up on Brody making the returning? I know that was an issue, a concern at one time. That's not impacted by.
Not, not, not that I see, no. It, it's mostly the parked vehicles and blocking driveways, things like that.
Okay. And a final question, if I may, back to Sylvia. Whether we approve this variance or not, our ability to control the use of this piece of property is not impacted either way, correct?
Sorry, I was muted. That's correct. That's correct. I mean, chief's concerns are very valid concerns and I believe the neighbors may express some of that. I don't know how many neighbors are in attendance at this moment.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
Thank you. First off, I am pro-business. So I have a couple of questions. Ms. Anita Dunn, what happens if in the near future of success that you need in addition to these 18, an additional 20 more parking spaces? Am I open?
You, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that that's going to be the case. I, we, you know, again, we talked about this last week and we have been managing to do business for three and a half years. Yes, it's been a bit of a struggle. You asked me, Rudy, back then, I'm sorry, Ms. Councilmember Rosengard. You asked me back the last meeting about Uber. And I think I clarified with you that we have agreements with Uber and there's another company called Lyft and we do Uber Eats. So there's all sorts of things like that. Also, we, while we talked, when we talked to the neighbors, we, they're, they're, I assume they're working on it. That's what we talked about. Working on getting a signage for the streets. So I, you know, I, we agreed, I would try to get the parking, they would try to get the signs. So here we are. I'm trying to get the parking. Hopefully, they are going to try to get the signs. So I'm hoping that that issue will be resolved. As for our success, well, again, we've been managing with 18 parking spaces and it's been a very big struggle. What was on the street was basically our daily, our everyday traffic. It wasn't if we had a van or anything like that. It was our everyday events, our everyday business. So I think that the parking lot in and of itself with the increased parking would be able to handle our business on a daily basis. So, you know, in regular business hours. I don't foresee any change to our business model. We've been doing the same thing for three and a half years over there or whatever, since we opened October, three years. So I don't see any change in the business model. We are doing what we're continuing to do for the next three years, hopefully. So, no, I don't think that there's any, any reason to concern about our success. We are who we are. We can't make the building any bigger. We can't make, you know, there's nothing else to add. We've been using all of our resources the best we can. And nothing is, in my opinion, or I have no plans to change anything. It's working out just fine. The only problem we have is that we don't have enough parking. And the bar, the business needs that particular area addressed. All right. Thank you for that answer. I want to thank first off the people who weighed in, Catherine Johnson, Terrence Cowan, Walt Jenkins, and Roger Edmondson. And yes, we have read all your statements. The tough thing is being in our seat. We have to look at water quality, watershed improvement. We cannot regulate on zoning. We have to look at water quality, watershed improvement, we cannot regulate on zoning. So, it's not easy being here and trying to help a business and at the same time trying to make sure that we do the right thing for the whole of the city. One thing I want to ask right now is, all right, the customers to the barn are parking on a residential street right now. So, our watershed improvement needs to accommodate for the fact that there may be oil spills or gas spills onto the residential street. Someone has to mitigate for that. They're already parking near the barn, and these things could be happening to affect the Edwards Aquifer. So, what is the difference if they move 50 feet in and they're doing the same identical thing, but we take care of one problem? They're no longer on the residential street where the homeowners are against them parking on that residential street. Can someone help me understand that? And while you're thinking about that, then here's another one that one of the people who weighed in asked. Ms. Dunn, would you consider doing a second level parking garage versus adding more impervious cover? I know the answer, but I'm asking.
All right, I'm unmuted? Yes, am I muted?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, that's a series of questions, so it's kind of hard for me to keep up. I...
Ms. Dunn, the first one you're not going to be able to answer, because that's more of an engineer question. The second one is, would you consider doing something to where instead of adding width in parking space, that you're going elevating up? Well, I am going to answer that first question, actually, because the whole idea, your question is, as far as I understand it, let me clarify, is that if we take the parking off the street and put it on our parking lot, what is the difference to the Edwards Aquifer? The difference is a $350,000 water quality pond that does not let a drop of water leave our sight. So, there's a difference in how the water quality will be taken care of for the Aquifer. In terms of building a second garage over there, I seriously have difficulty with that question. We have no money to build anything else. Our money went on engineers and lawyers for this city to try to get through to where we are today. So, no, I can't build a double garage over there. I couldn't, we sold our house, like, are you kidding me? So, no, I'm sorry, we can't build anything else. We have money enough, we'll do our parking lot, try to get our business stabilized, and then we will continue with business as usual over the last three years. So, no, I'm sorry, there is no money to get any kind of a parking garage built over there. Ms. Dunn, do I understand that I was not asking that question or did not create that question? I asked it for someone else who weighed in. That's okay, I'm quite happy to answer the question. I answered it, because there is no money for parking garage. Next question that one of the folks who weighed in is wondering. Parking was not considered when you considered a business on Countrywide. What would you be doing differently, knowing where you're at now? Okay. Parking certainly was considered, and I can certainly send you another picture of the Austin Curling Center with a pervious pavement and triple-filtered water quality system that, again, let no water leave our sight. So, there was always parking for this particular business. 10 years ago, we went to the City of Sunset Valley, and we asked for that variance back then, so we could get, I think we were at 29%, 30% at that point as a total. So, there was parking for the Curling Center. We did not choose to build anything on Countrywide Lane. We gave the City of Sunset Valley seven or eight months, they asked us for an extension on a feasibility study in November 2010. We gave them those months, and we went back on March 1st, 2011, to try to get to some decision on where we were going, it'd been months and months. We hadn't even bought the property. So, no, we didn't decide to put that there. We had two properties we were looking at. We were looking at one on Southwest Parkway, which now has a swimming center over there, and we were looking at the City of Sunset Valley. We tried to bring the investment to the City of Sunset Valley, and we asked for a variance for our parking back then, and we couldn't get past that. But you guys told us, every single council member voted yea on March 1st, 2011, that we would work with staff, and we would go and purchase the property, and a curling facility would be there with adequate parking, and that didn't happen. So, that's the reason we're in this situation today. We didn't choose to spend 10 years trying to develop a property that's in an ETJ of a city. We chose to go over there and offer that city a substantial investment with all the economic development and economic opportunity was something that any city would say, yeah, this is a good thing. Someone's going to come in, they're going to develop that property, they're going to bring the wastewater and take the existing septic systems off the Aquifer. They're still there, by the way, so it's the Aquifer we're worried about. And we were going to bring the water, which we already did. We brought a triple, we brought a system there that doesn't let the water leave the property. The only thing that was missing was the wastewater pipe. But we didn't need a wastewater pipe. When the City of Sunset Valley decided, yeah, we'll let you buy the property, which we immediately did within a couple of weeks, and we paid cash for it, by the way. So, we were tied to that property, hook, line, and sinker. So, no, we didn't choose to go over to Countrywide Lane. It was unanimously approved by the Sunset Valley City Council that they would work with us to get that facility there. And we are 10 years later, and here we are today. We don't have money to build parking garages, we don't have money to do anything other than try to run our business. So, no, I'm sorry, we did not choose this. No one in their right mind chose this. Ms. Dunn, thank you. And with that said, I am ready to make a motion. I move that with the five findings that we approve based on the following, that the applicant meets the requirements intended to treat and improve water quality based on the existing improvements on the property. And then it lists the five findings, and I am basing my decision on the fact that our city engineer, Freeland Turk, has accepted the applicant's engineering statement and feels the additional parking and impervious cover can be accommodated by the applicant's existing pond. Thank you. That's my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second that motion based upon the engineering calculations and such. I also want to point out that in the mayor's dashboard is a document that lists impervious cover calculation for other various businesses in Sunset Valley. And I will say that it is our 18% has not been consistently applied in the least. I look at AISD Burger Center at 76.8%, Coles at 44.81%, Holiday Inn at 49.5%, Longhorn Steakhouse at 42.9%, Cannoli Joe's 47.4%, and I can go on. So, now, I don't have the history, I've only been here for five years, so I know there's history here, but this seems to me very inconsistently applied, and based upon the engineer validating the mitigation with the pond, I second this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to allow the rest of the councilmembers that have their hands up to speak, since we now have a motion, and then we have two residents who want to speak. And then if there's anybody else in the room who wants to speak to this issue and/or to the motion that's now on the table, if you please raise your hands so that I can at least see who wants to speak. And Councilmember Elliott, I saw that your hand was up, but now it's down, so I'm not going to call on you unless you indicate that you want to speak again. I'll start with Councilmember Gonzalez.
I guess I need to, although I'm not really inclined to, say that the narrative may not be exactly what the narrative was, for those of us who were there at the time. There were things like parking agreements with Lowe's that never materialized. There were many things that are left out of the narrative, and the fact that this was a conversion from essentially a single family house into a business. And I think former councilmember Walt Jenkins has a lot to say that reflects my memory and his comments and the feedback, so I assume everyone else has read that, and they can go back to why some of us might have concerns. So, the other, 18% came after the fact, after AISD, and so I think that that's a thing for a lot of the existing businesses. It came after Cannoli Joe's bought Wolf's Nursery, which was also there. All of the other properties were existing commercial businesses with the exception of the barn, as far as I can tell. And so, they existed either as a redevelopment of something that was already a commercial building, or an existing commercial building that hasn't really particularly redeveloped. So, I think that there's mitigating factors in all those cases with the exception of the barn, and the barn was in the midst of a commercial development. So, I would say that's a significant difference, and an explanation for a lot of those other properties. So, that's all I have to add to the conversation, just historically, I probably wouldn't bother to do it, except that it feels like it hasn't been set. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, what has been done by former councils does not encumber the current council. And one of the reasons I ran for council was because I was very concerned about the variances that were being given. And I'm a firm believer in the 18%. I don't believe that the circumstances that have been prevented are providing enough to change from the 18% impervious cover, and that's why I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional council members? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Okay, again, I'm using logic here. There's 18 cars, I'm making this up, I don't know how many are parking on the residential street, but there's 18 parking lots that they are asking for, 18 parking spaces. Let's say there's 18 of them parking on the residential street. There's nothing mitigated for any oil runoff or any gas runoff. They now move on to the property where there's mitigation with a treatment water quality pond that mitigates for any runoff. Why would that not be better than having them on a residential street where the same thing could be happening? I'm waiting for anyone to help me understand. Thanks.
Well, the fault in your logic, Councilmember Rosen Garden, is that you assume that it's a fixed universe, that there's only going to be the 18 cars and not the additional 18. And so, that would be the fault in the logic, and especially if, as is being discussed right now, there's an extension of the outside entertainment venues, is from what I've heard that the resident concern is. So, I've heard significant resident concern, I have not heard significant resident agreement. I did a fair amount of research today. None of the residents know, because they haven't been told by the city, that this action is in place. We have not officially notified them, we're not required to officially notify them, so I'm not saying that we should have, but, you know, if they don't even know it's happening, and maybe only the supporters might know it's happening, then they're just going on their home saying, okay, well, we're somewhat protected here, there's not going to be additional parking, there's not going to be additional expansion, and they have no reason to pay attention. And so, there's, I think, the fallacy to your argument is that it would be a fixed number, so rather than an increasing number, and that's, and there's no basis to believe it is a fixed number. Thank you.
Thank you. And right now, I'm going to start calling on Councilmember Rosen Garden, I'll let you respond to that, and then I'm going to begin calling on residents and other individuals that are not councilmembers or the presenter. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Okay. I appreciate what you're saying, Councilmember Gonzalez, but again, address just the 18 right now. Let's not pretend that it went bigger just yet. 18 cars are being moved off of Countrywide, moved on to the barn property where there is mitigation and a treatment pond. Why would that not be a better situation than what we have right now? Thank you.
And so, the first, I'm going to call, we have one resident, Joe Coisen, who lives at the end of Countrywide, and he is dialed in, and so, as the organizer, I don't have the ability to give him the floor individually as a phone-only participant, but I am going to unmute everybody that is in the meeting, including everybody who's on by phone, so I would ask that everybody please self-mute your phone and/or your computer, and that you not interrupt and allow Mr. Coisen to have the floor. And so, with that, Joe, everybody is now unmuted, which means if you're not self-muted, we're going to get background noise from you, so if everybody would please self-mute, Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Elliott. And Joe, you have the floor.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I think I understand, and I certainly appreciate all of the legal and environmental requirements that staff and council are evaluating on this subject, and I really don't want to speak much to that. What I do want to speak to is the controversy that I see on Countrywide Lane between some of the neighbors and bar, and most of that centered around, in my opinion, traffic, parking, and cars coming down the street and doing turnarounds in driveways. And so, that's an ongoing problem, and I think those neighbors who have problems with that today will have problems with that in the future. And so, when I look at the situation and talk to Anita and talk to the chief of police and how can we mitigate the situation, one of the ways that I think that's possible is to create some more parking on their property, especially if the city engineer agrees that they're within the requirements. I do understand the implications of what could come next, I guess I feel like I would deal with that down the line. Right now, I think that this is a decent compromise to alleviate some of the, in my opinion, sometimes quite substantial controversy that's going on in the streets in regards to the bar. And so, thank you for the time, and I seed the floor.
Thank you. And while we have councilmembers, does anybody, do any of our councilmembers have a question for Joe while he's on the phone and we have him with an open mic?
I do.
Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Joe, can you tell me, my understanding is that the parking is really only significantly impacting Countrywide and not Oakdale. So, I'm particularly concerned about the residents of Countrywide, because I always think that you should pay attention to people who it impacts the most. And so, can you tell me, well, I know you told me actually earlier in the day, but can you tell me what the split is on the street about your perception of who's in favor of this and who's not?
Sure. And I can't speak to Oakdale. In fact, you know, it seems so far away from me at the moment, you know, they're across Brody, which would be difficult to walk across and get there and all that. And I haven't taken a poll ahead of this issue, but I think I know the personalities of the neighbors on the street well enough to say that, you know, it's probably three and three, I think there's probably three neighbors who would oppose this, mostly because I think they just are opposed to the bar existing, really, almost in any form or fashion, and I think the other three are probably like, well, you know, what can we do to get along here? And so, that would be my, you know, sort of unofficial opinion on the street.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilmembers that want to speak to Joe before I make it so that it's difficult for me to access him? Okay, thank you, Joe. And Joe, if you're still around and something comes up, just send me a text message, and I can do the same thing that I just did.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next resident speaker is Terry Cowan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to speak to, with great sympathy, to my neighbor far away on Countrywide. Sterns Lane is also one of these outlying streets and not a, uh, attached to the rest of the city, and, uh, and we've had issues with parking over here, big time, traffic issues in this part of town. Unfortunately, granting more, granting this only will temporarily take traffic off of Countrywide, if their business continues to be successful, that pressure to use countrywide will return. So this is, this would be a temporary retreat. Secondly, I want to draw attention to that table, you don't have to put it up, Sylvia, uh, that, uh, statistics about the deviations from impervious cover. I have drawn it to the attention of city administration, Mayor, three different occasions, that that is misleading, the way it is, it's an example of misleading with data. To fix it, all one has to do is to add what land development code was in place when those things happened, and it has never been added to that report. That causes me concern, and it leads to skepticism. I have to say, I'm disappointed that something of this importance, that the council and mayor did not have the city engineer to ask questions of, that they were not in the meeting, and, uh, the, the staff are not ex, what are called the experts. In regard to the facility, as it grows, as the bar grows, and the venue grows, there will be more traffic. A percentage of that traffic will be intoxicated. We're already seeing that, I've, I've listened to the meetings and heard the chief talk about intoxicated people coming out of that facility. It will increase as the number of cars there increase. This actually is a detriment to public safety and, uh, the community's safety in that area, which is one of the criteria that you're looking for. In regard to this not legally setting a precedent is true, but it really puts pressure on council members to follow what other councilmembers have done. Uh, I heard Councilmember Reeves use, uh, this misrepresenting chart, incomplete data on impervious cover, as an argument to second the motion to grant the variance, so it definitely will impact that way. I'm just saying, I think, I'm asking you, there, there are adequate reasons for you to not approve this, and they're real, for now and into our future as a city. And this is an opportunity to hold the line at 18%. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, could you please pull up the chart that, again, that, um, Councilmember Reeves referenced? Thank you. Um, so yes, easy enough, sorry about that, Terry didn't know you wanted those two columns added. This is a chart that Clay made for me, um, at least over a year ago now. So Sylvia, um, easy, easy change, could you please add two columns to this and send a revised version of it? I'd like two columns added, one that says the year, um, that whatever the most recent development or redevelopment on that property occurred, and under which version or which latest addition, adoption year of our code. Um, what I can tell you based on my years here is that we already have the issue we're talking about this evening. So in viral plan, if you see, they are at 17.9%, they are, they came in under our current code. ATS Engineering, 17.95 under the current code. The Barn, 18%, and that's The Barn on, um, the, the barn that we call the, the other barn, the, um, special events barn and homestead. So they came in under our current code. The outliers on here that are important is that Longhorn Steakhouse is at 42.9%, they were provided a variance under our current code. Again, that doesn't mean we have to follow it here, as Councilmember Medicus pointed out clearly and accurately, we are no way bound by the decisions of a past council. In addition to that, variances are very much meant to be case-specific, that's part of why they are called a variance, it's supposed to be specific to that applicant, that circumstance, that property. But similar to Longhorn Steakhouse, AISD at 76.8, give or take percent, they have done extensive redevelopment that allowed them to get additional variances in the last 10 years. Most, the, the biggest one being they built an additional second field, um, on their site. So we can add the two additional columns, but I don't think that Councilmember Reeves is completely out in left field to say this chart shows that we have inconsistencies of how we've applied our current code in the last 10 years. That doesn't mean we should keep approving variances, but she wasn't completely inaccurate.
Mayor, I would also add that in the redevelopment, any redevelopment that exceeds 50% has to come to current code anyway.
Well, that's what our code says, and that's why AISD and Longhorn Steakhouse are important examples of, some, a council wrote that rule while they were at, you know, a high percentage, assuming that when they redeveloped, you would force them to pull down to 18%. Of course, when Red Robin got bought out by Longhorn, Longhorn Corporate came to us and said, that's absolutely ridiculous, we're not going to go from, you know, whatever their higher percentage was to 18. And so council made an exception and allowed them to have a variance. Um, so they did reduce their impervious cover by some small incremental amount, um, but they were allowed to redevelop completely, scrape and rebuild at 42.9%. AISD, I'm a little bit more hazy, but there definitely was a lot of shell moving on the table. I honestly, to be honest, even though I sat through all of it, I couldn't completely follow how we justified everything we did, but we certainly didn't require them, once they built that new stadium, we did not require them to do a significant impervious cover reduction. Part of what we did was we asked them to do an in perpetuity agreement to reduce the number of buses, which they did do, so I think they cut their bus fleet, um, maybe in half, some significant amount, and guaranteed that that would be in perpetuity. Next speaker is Rob Johnson, and then I have Carla Jenkins. If there are any other, uh, people in the room who want to speak, if you would please raise your hand, and same thing, if there are councilmembers that want to add to the conversation before we call for a vote. Rob Johnson?
Hello. Uh, I don't really have like a cohesive, uh, statement here, I kind of just took notes as we went along and, and some, this is going to be very disjointed, but, uh, first off, I gotta agree with Terry, I, I cannot believe we do not have the city engineer around for this meeting, especially because Walter brought up issues that he saw or that were existing with the previous pool before, maybe there were, maybe there weren't, but it would be nice to ask an engineer if that was the case, so that they could actually field that question. So, uh, were they made aware, um, this is just kind of rhetorical, were they made aware that this was going to come up and that maybe we would have lots of questions for them? I think that's like kind of a, I don't know, it just seems a little strange. Um, the, the other thing I'd like to see on that, that table of, uh, current percentages used is like whether there was like a variance, and maybe everything that you said in there would, would cover that, but, um, would everything that is over, because you talked about like the two different, um, land development codes, and, you know, which one it was developed under, and, but it would also be nice to know if, if there was a variance there. Uh, the argument next is the argument that, oh, well, we've done it before, so we must do it now, holds zero water, like, you're, we're almost being tied to like previous mistakes by, uh, city councils in the past, like, we want to go for 18, that is what the community has decided, and to say that you can't ever do that, or, you know, we should just approve every variance because we did it in the past, I mean, that just builds the case for the next one that says like, well, you did it for The Barn. Anyway, um, this one is definitely not about this, but more about just like quality of life around, uh, the bar out there. Uh, went for a run the other day down Brody, and it was like six o'clock in the morning, and 737 Oakdale, I, I think that's the address, that's like the pin that I saw, is just like bathed in light, you know, because I guess those lights just stay on all night, and that's kind of a, and we don't have control over that, because I guess ETJ only lets us have control over, uh, water and some other small things, but, uh, it is a shame that people that bought houses way out in the country are now just like bathed in parking lights. Um, oh, I, I, I don't even want to say that like I'm against it, like, the, the Dunn families' issue is like really feeling for it, but like, I don't think there's enough information to, to move forward on it right now. That's just, uh, my disjointed statement, thank you.
Next speaker is Carla Jenkins. Carla, you are self-muted.
Can you hear me now?
We sure can.
So, um, I live at 800 Oakdale Drive, I drive by The Barn every day, and I can tell you that there seem to be more and more signs up and, uh, more flags up and anything that can be done to get attention, which is irritating when the lights come on as well at, at nighttime. But my real issue here is, I'd like to know how many times the Duns have come to the city for variances, and of that number, how many of those people? How many of those variances were granted? Can you answer that, Sylvia?
Not, not right this moment, no, I'll have to do some digging.
Well, I know it's been, they, I know they've been granted several variances, and every time they say that they won't be back for more, and then they're back. So I don't think they're ever going to be happy until they get exactly what they want, and I don't think it's possible for them to get that, or shouldn't be possible. And I agree, I agree with Terry, so, that's it.
Thank you, Carla. The next speaker is Alfonso Carmona.
I am in Muret.
Yes, we can hear you, Alfonso. Hi.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the council. My name is Alfonso Carmona, 1038 Sunflower. Uh, I was looking this impervious cover since four years ago, when they tried to build the facilities, and we spent over $650,000 with one pond and some grain, uh, quality procedures and infrastructure that will protect our water quality. At this moment, I understand that is one application, and it's not the city, it's the ETJ, but in the way that the application is coming, it's true that we have five criterias to accept that variance. And I don't know if I would say now or at the end, if I feel bad for the owners of the bank, The Barn, this lady and her husband, because I saw them fighting and fighting with the city. Continuously, they came and they request something, and always they refer, then years ago, ten years ago, a mayor and members of the council and city administrators, they convinced them to do something, and continuously they change. Well, at this moment, looking the, the item in the way that they wrote, they say, well, they want to consider a variance for the application of 18 parking spaces. Well, it's true, where is the engineer there? 18 parking spaces, each parking space is 300 square feet, so we are talking 5,400 square feet of impervious cover. So if we are looking at 5,400 square feet, we are talking almost the, one of the buildings of the public works. This is what they are requesting, this is the equivalent. The engineer, he said, then, they don't have the, he referred to the non-pond free board. How you design one pond with a free board? He needs to check the data, because when they design a pond, by rules, you need to have a free board, that is a safety margin. So something is wrong. Looking more, when I was checking this, they start talking about, then this is ETJ, and the 18%, well, this place is located in the Williamson Creek watershed, and the Williamson Creek watershed is part of the City of Austin responsibility, and that is 18% in this area. The city, they wanted, or we approved, for the city years ago, 18%, but we are almost matching the watershed. So I suggest that they will check what is the impervious cover for the Williamson Creek watershed before they start talking. Second, you cannot assume cars that they are parking in Brody or in Jones or in other places, we are talking one business that apply for one variance, and this is the criteria. Now, with all respect, Mrs. Mayor, and the other member of the council, Rosengarden, you were in all of that situations with these people, and no, we don't need to blame Clay, and now blame Sylvia, we need to have this now and be accountable. I hope that at this moment, we will use the engineer and we will use the proper criteria, because that would set a bad precedent. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry to say that, and I'm sorry for that, people, and they suffer a lot, and it's bad for the reputation of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Alfonso, I don't know, um, yeah, I, just to be clear, I am not, I, I don't blame past staff, I was here for it. Uh, my experience with the Duns was that they just were not honest, um, and as hard as that is to say, my experience was that they were not honest with council, they were not honest with the residents of Countrywide, and so early on, I took a position that the residents in the ETJ, similar to, uh, the residents of Sterns Lane, um, people who develop their, a positive or a negative can be, it's more difficult, because you actually don't have, you're dealing with more than one municipality, you're dealing with Travis County, you're dealing with, uh, City of Austin, you're dealing with Sunset Valley. Um, that was not a situation that was unknown to the Duns when they, uh, looked at what they were going to do on that property, and in no way, shape, or form is it truthful to say that city council unanimously voted to approve anything. Um, my knowledge as an active elected official was that when they finally brought us an actual plan, the plan indicated that there was nowhere near enough parking to support the Curling Center and Restaurant, and that it was abundantly clear that they were going to push almost all of their parking onto Countrywide, and then they were dishonest and said that they had an agreement with Lowe's, which it took one phone call for Lowe's to confirm, no, that does not exist. Um, so yes, for residents here in the room that want to make sure I still have a backbone, I do, I do remember it, and if I were a voting councilmember tonight, although I do understand the logic that Sylvia put together in her recommendation, and I also understand where Rudy's coming from and trying to be pro, pro-business and also trying to, um, and along with Joe Coisen, build a bridge to some sort of solution, my experience with this applicant is that they, as Carla My experience with this applicant is that they, as Carla Jenkins pointed out, it'll be something else in six months. My questions, based on what I've heard tonight Sylvia, I do now agree that it would be helpful not just to have our engineer present, but to also have the applicant's engineer present. But that's not something that I feel like I need to require. I am curious though, does this applicant have any other current violations that exist on their property? And does that in any way influence council making a decision on a different variance? So that's a question for both Sylvia and Roxy.
Right now, there is no existing violation. We are still working through, council granted them a one-year temporary sign, the marquee sign that they have out there. They were to be working with Travis County on the sign. I do know COVID has kind of gotten in the way of that, but that is the only thing. And that's coming up for renewal and/or removal. And the applicant is aware of that and is going to be working through that issue separate and apart from this one.
Okay. And then second question for staff or specifically for Sylvia. Well, actually, Roxy, on that question, is there anything that limits council from approving a variance if there are other outstanding issues that haven't been resolved?
No, the, and the variance process that we're looking at is included under the chapter four regarding watershed development. And in section 4.103, there is nothing in it that says that if there's something outstanding, you can't approve that variance. The only thing it says is that within the council's opinion, you know, if they find that the criteria is met, then they, they grant, they can grant it.
Okay. And then my next question Sylvia relates to the questions that Walter Jenkins posted on Open Gov, which in short is, has this ever, has this pond been tested? And can we ensure that council sees that before they approve something from the engineer that says it has the potential to support additional engineering? Can we also have something that says it's been tested and confirmed to function?
That is certainly in the council's ability to request that prior to an approval.
The next, councilmembers, I'm going to go through the rest of the residents who have their hands raised and then I'll circle back around to councilmembers. Charles Goyette, you have the floor.
Yes, hello. I've heard a lot of argument today, tonight, and all of the arguments that have been presented against passing this, this variance tonight, I think have been good. I'm not going to regurgitate all of what other people said, but I thought they were all on point. One thing that I'm a little bit confused on, I guess, maybe it's because I wasn't paying good enough attention, is it sounds like this is just, this variance is just a piece of what is overall required in order for whatever development needs to continue, is approved and is allowed to continue. Maybe not. Maybe this is just about parking. Maybe everything else is in place. I don't know, but I guess I heard something tonight that I hadn't considered in the past, and that was something that Ms. Jenkins said about a history. I know this, this issue goes back a long way, you know, 10 years, right? I mean, this is the, the applicant has made admission to that. I think all parties concerned, particularly the city council, who I wouldn't want to be in their position to make this decision tonight. They need to, they need a full history because a lot of what has happened, they were not privy to. They were not part of council when it all happened. I don't have all the historical background for this project, but I think it's necessary to make a good decision. And, and I also heard what Terry Cowan said tonight that I thought was good. And I think Melissa sort of chimed in in that same vein. And that is, you know, once the additional parking is allowed, you know, I think it's reasonable to assume that that's just a temporary fix, that, you know, it'll just grow accordingly. So the problem will come back, but yet now it'll be all the more congested. And all the associated problems will still be there and then some. So, and the fact that, you know, our engineer or the applicant's engineer was not present, I think that was an oversight as well. So I don't think the city council has the information necessary, has a full breadth of what all they need in order to make a decision to grant this variance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say one last thing is that elections are coming up. And every election, at least Terry Cowan tends to ask, will you honor the 18% incurious cover? And I answered yes. And I know councilmember Medicus answered yes. And I generally see everybody answer yes. And, and I, and I just want people to remember that because I certainly will make note of this when, when the elections come up. And I think that people should remember that I think pretty much all of them said yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions or comments on this before I call for a vote? Okay, I see more hands going up. Okay, Anita, I'm going to allow you to speak first, and then I have two councilmembers. And then this is the last call. So if there's anybody else who wants to get in queue to speak, please do so now. Anita, you have the floor.
I would rather take the floor after everybody's finished speaking. I have a whole list of things to address here. It's hard to keep up. So go ahead and talk to everybody.
No, Anita, Anita, unfortunately you have the floor right now because the other two people are councilmembers. And so councilmembers can continue to raise their hands all the way up until somebody calls for a vote. How about this? I'll let you speak now and then if, if you want to circle back around again, you can, you can go again.
Yes, it'd like be nice to have a say before you start the vote. There's so many things to address here. First of all, Mayor, I take great offense to you calling us a liar. Because in all of this, anything that I tell this council or people on, on the, on mute here, I have written proof of what I say. I have written proof because I have a stack of emails a foot high that I requested through open records. So if you want to call us dishonest and untruthful, we were reacting to what we read from those, those emails. We went into your city in, in good faith, bringing you an industry that would have had enormous impact on your, on your finances, enormous impact. We didn't come in there to rip anybody off or to, to, to mislead anybody. That's not what we were about. And ever since this 10 years now, we've been called liars. You yourself called us slippery. We hadn't even put a pick in the ground and you called us slippery. So you want to mention about us being a liar? If I say it, I can prove it. And, and let's go back to the Lowe's thing. Oh, we should have gotten the thing from Lowe's back 10 years ago. Well, guess what? We had an agreement. We were in talking to these people. And, and I have emails also showing that Lowe's was called and they were threatened because they didn't think, whoever, it was a private citizen, I won't mention that person's name, didn't think that Lowe's was doing something legal by allowing us to use their facility for overflow parking for our curling facility. That was toward it because they were threatened. The same with the Burger Center. We went to the Burger Center, we talked to them. It wasn't about something on a daily basis. It was for six special events a year. We were talking to them. I don't know who you people talk to. But I'm telling you, the Burger Center and Lowe's has a lot of people. And, and we, we, even to this day, I'm in communication with the management. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm so incensed right now to be called a liar after 10 years of dealing with you people. So let me move on here to the next thing that we, oh, the flags. Oh, yes, there's flags over there now. Well, my understanding is that your flag, your, your sign rules have been relaxed for the COVID. If that has changed, by all means, let me know. And I will make sure that we do what we need to do over there. So no, we're not out to do anything wrong. We're trying to follow the codes as they come at us. And, and as for the engineers being there, not there tonight, we have, the engineer approved it. Your city engineer approved it. What is it that you're not happy about? What is it exactly that you don't understand that the engineer says the water quality will be maintained and that pond can hold the amount of capacity, the extra volume that it's designed to hold? That's a given. The engineers have had their say. So, and, and as, as for intoxication, people in a bar being intoxicated. Well, don't you think that people leave docks are not intoxicated too? Like you've got bars over there. Why is it ours is all of a sudden going to, you know, the big ruination of all, all humanity over there? People go to bars, they drink. They Uber home, hopefully if they're not, not too drunk to do it and, and be responsible. So we have had no issues with people over at our bar. And I don't know about docks. They're liquor establishment. So, yeah, people go there and they drink. So I can't defend my business that people come and drink. That's what bars do. So when you're talking about you're, the only variances in the last 10 years, your codes in the last 10 years have been erratic in terms of what you've given people and what you haven't given people. So if you were subject to the 18%, you're not, you're not subject to the 18%. If there's a variance process, we have every single right under those codes to come in and ask for a variance. Now you can stand or sit there and you can talk about, oh, well, the future of this business, that and the future of this business. And we keep coming in and asking for stuff. We asked for nothing that we weren't, that wasn't discussed in 2010, absolutely nothing. We're not that difficult to get along with. Miki Powers, I worked with her over Porter Middle School. You ask Miki Powers how hard it is to get along with me. I'm, I'm, it's hard to get along with me when I'm sitting there reading emails and going back and forth between city administrators and your mayor and God knows who else, private citizens, disparaging us and making up stuff just because, I don't know, what are you dreaming it up? You're looking for problems? So no, I'm sorry that I, I don't agree with that. I'm not difficult to get along with. I'm not a liar. And I'm not a person who comes in under, under any kind of ulterior motive here. We wanted to build a business. You told us to buy the property. Everybody voted on it. And don't tell me you don't remember who voted on it. Every single one of them did. It's not her. Go back to the agenda. Yay, 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 right down the road. Went back to staff. I got an email from Clay Collins the next morning and he said, we have a clear message that the, that the council will work with us. So we bought the property. So don't, don't try to gaslight me on that. I know where we were and I know how we got where we are right now. And it's nothing short of discrimination. 50 plus variances have been approved in that, that city over the last 11 years. Only ones not, the only ones not. And I don't understand why. We were, we're asking for a lot less than a lot of other people. So why is it that our, our property is somehow like the Holy Grail of the aquifer? You guys wanted to get the aquifer clean, you should have taken the septic systems off. Instead, you had me build a big commercial one and add to it. So don't talk to me about aquifer. And as your city codes go, I have been fighting this for 10 years. And you mark my words. If I say something in these meetings, it's true and I have it in writing. So anything that I say here that you want proof of, you just let me know and I'll send it to you in the next couple of days when I have a chance to dig it out again. I know what I'm talking about here. You guys got your business and you got your own lives. This is our life. This is our life. It has been our life for 10 years. We didn't walk into your city asking you for anything. We were bringing you an, an industry that could have substantially increased your, your annual wealth. So don't tell me that we're trying to do something wrong for that city. And then I, I, I don't know what else to do. The public street, the quality of the pond is good. Engineers approved it. The lighting, I'm sorry if the lighting is not to your liking. I'm working with Sylvia on that. We're taking, we've taken down the neon lighting and we're working on that. So don't tell me we're not working with you people. And the letter from the neighbors. Sylvia, I talked to the people along with Joe and Alice Ye who spoke the last time. We have, I, I talked to Roger Edmondston from across the street today. And he was going to send a letter in, in support of this. I talked to the neighbors who just bought Cane's house behind us. She was going to, and her husband were going to send a letter in, in support of this. So it's not just, not just one or two people on the street. So we have, we have ample justification to ask for this variance. And it is, it is unfathomable that I'm still here 10 years later looking for it. So, you know, I, I don't know what else to say to you people. It just makes no sense to me. We're trying to run a business over here. We're a mom and pop. You look at your, your concrete building over there, 49%, 70%. I don't see a water quality pond over there like the one we built. Nowhere in your city is there a water quality pond that puts every single drop of water back onto, onto the property. Nowhere in your city has that happened. We have, we have outdone ourselves. Rather than any property on in your city who got a variance, we have outdone them in terms of what we did for our property. And our engineer approved it and your engineer approved it. Now we can stand here and we go, let's put this off for two more weeks. Let's get them back here in another month. Let's just put it off. Well, like seriously, there's nothing else I can tell you. There's nothing else that your city can tell you. You see the history of it. So don't get in here telling me I'm a liar and I'm dishonest. For heaven's sake, I go, I'll write the book. You want to see a dishonesty that we've experienced in that city over the last 10 years. Now I'm not going to say anything else here right now. We are asking for this variance. We need this variance. We have met the criteria, all the five criteria. The two engineers have said it's good. Anything else seems to me that it's irrelevant to this. We're not new here. We're not, this is not anything new to the city. So you've granted 50 variances in the last year. Well, grant another one for heaven's sake. You're trying to fix our business. We can fix our own business. All the suggestions, why don't you do this and why don't you do that? Why don't you give us more parking and leave us alone and let us run our business? You know, I mean, what difference does it make if, if, if we have 18 parking spaces, 40 parking spaces? We are working with the city and we are working with the people on the street. So I, there's nothing else I can say here. So you can postpone this for another two weeks. I'll come back and I'll rant and rave again because nobody seems to listen to me. I'm a liar. I don't, I'm not honest. I'm a dishonest person. I've never been so insulted in all my life, public, your mayor, that's two, two years ago. We had been quiet for a year and a half running our business. And two years ago, when your election was up and mayor, you were running for mayor again. You stood up on that floor and you called us dirty and stubborn. And that brought us back to that meeting for the council, the, the vote for the mayor. We weren't involving ourselves in your business. So you want to talk about libel here? We're not, we're not at fault here, Mayor. This is your doings. You're the one who sent the motion back. You put the motion out, would send it back to staff. And the next morning, we got a message from Clay Collins and then you became mayor. And I don't know what happened between the time that went back and we decided to buy that property. But I guarantee you something happened there that we're not aware of. Did you hoodwink us in the buying it? Was that it? You, you fought with Lowe's over there. You couldn't fight them. So they ended up suing you. So Lowe's ended up doing theirs. So we were stinging from that. We weren't Lowe's. I don't know who's making decisions over there. You could have had the Lowe's money coming in every year. You could have had a curling facility money coming in year, every year. But no, you couldn't do that. You're fighting things that make no sense to me. And if you make an agreement with someone, I suggest that you try and keep it. Lowe's did what they were supposed to do and that was not our fault. That's not our fault. If you were stinging from something that didn't happen, that ETJ has been totally mismanaged. You, you mismanaged Lowe's, you mismanaged us. You bought a property at the end, back of the street where Joe's currently living and you lost $700,000 on that deal. I don't understand it. I'm not a liar. I'm, I'm observant. I can tell you what I see and my opinions of it. And I guarantee you, these last 10 years, I've got lots of opinions. You sued us, Mayor. We didn't sue you. You sued us. You sued us. We countersued. We sued you for the business that you did in the, in the, the Austin Curling Center project. And the arrogance to turn around and do the exact same thing on the, on the barn project? Do we have to sue you again? Is that what we need to do? Like seriously, people? What is going on over there? We're trying to run a business here. If everyone in the last, in the last 10 or 12 years got the variance except us, this is personal. Don't tell me it's not personal. One of the best land use lawyers in this city, her name is Nikhil Mead. When we first went into her office and spent $100,000 on legal fees, she said, Anita, this is personal. And she was absolutely right. Now, I don't know if you don't like me. And Mayor, another thing you said, oh, we weren't humble enough. I got that in one of your emails too. At least the Brody homestead people were humble. But there's nowhere in your land development council, I see any criteria for being humble. If there was, by God, you've totally broken that yourselves. If there was, by god, you've totally broken that yourselves. Now I'm going to stop talking here. Vote. Do whatever you're going to do. And I'm done. We're not going away. I can tell you that. So I don't know what else to say to you. You just want to run our business out, you want to run us out of business? You give corporations variance, but you want to run us out of business, a mom and pop? You've been tied to your city for 10 years, tortured, tortured, and robbed blind of our income. Our life savings went into that company over there and that little care you care about. All you minded was trying to break us. Give him one more thing to put on the safe. I'm going to take that and put something else on the safe. Oh, never mind, put that back on the safe. You think they had more luck in a frigging cupboard or something? He's not my life engineer. He works for us. He costs a lot of frigging money. Honest to god, you people make me crazy. I'm going to stop talking now. Just stop talking.
Thank you. Carla Jenkins?
Can you hear me?
Hi Walter, we can hear you. Walter Jenkins taking.
Yeah, it's Walter on Carla's computer. A couple of things. First, a lot to unpack there and that's not really my job. But one thing is, a city doesn't collect revenue from ETJ properties. So I'd like to kind of put that on the record, no matter what the use is there. Beyond that, we had already, with the Duns, when I was on the council, a very hotly contested, very, very purged-out agreement that is what's in existence now, that has some variances. And as far as I know, there's nothing that's changed as far as water quality control or the situation within that property specifically itself that would warrant changing the agreement that was already made. I would just ask them to live up to it. And in that vein, I would like to point out that at the time, there was concern among some of the city council members, myself included, that we would be right where we are today. Such was our concern that the request at the time on our part was that we put up a rebarred concrete wall on the west line between the parking and the part of the lot that's behind the bar where the septic system is. Because we were worried that encroachment would occur in those areas. We backed off on that and let them put in the limestone boulders that they have in there now. The other thing that came up during that period of time was, what's repeatedly been said here is that our engineer and their engineers both inspected and signed off on this. That's not exactly true. There was an inspection evidently done by an outside engineer that was not contracted by the city, but by the Duns, on the retention detention pond. Our city engineer was not called in to do the required inspection. It wasn't our, it was a city, it wasn't literally an engineer that worked for the city, it was a contractor. It was our contracted engineer for this project was not called in, did not have an opportunity to inspect that pond before it was finished. And so what happened from that was that that came up as part of the problem when we were trying to finally finalize the current negotiated in good faith agreement. And we ended up relenting and not requiring them to tear that pond up and verify that the layers were put down in the way that the engineering specified. And that was a bit of a problem because there were, as I recall, three boars done or two boars done. And one of the critical layers didn't seem to have enough depth in it to comply with the specifications, the engineering specifications. In any event, we ended up relenting on that as well. We let that go forward. But in my opinion, and it's not in my opinion, the facts are that we, the city, don't have any engineer that has inspected that pond and signed off on it before it was finalized and put in. And that's part of the current agreement. So basically, you know, if you want to, if you guys are contemplating putting additional load. Well, first of all, we have an agreement with them. It was completely negotiated. They already have what they asked for before. And some of us at the time felt like they would be doing exactly what they're doing now because that's been the history. The squeaky wheel gets the most grease philosophy. I don't think that they meet the five criteria. Having said, and if I were on council today, I would not approve this. Having said all that, if I even contemplating approve it, I wouldn't do it without having that pond where you're going to ask for more use, heavier load on it. I wouldn't approve it without having that pond verified that it is exactly as engineered, which would entail digging it up and making sure that the layers were put down in the way that they were specified, that they should be by the engineering specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing hands going up and down. So if there's anybody else who wants to speak, please raise your hand. Councilmember Rosengarden, wait, oh, sorry. Helen Bessie. I saw your hand go up and down a couple of times. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Because what I'm going to say has really nothing to do with any of this. And I'm just so sorry that all of you, both parties concerned, are having to deal with this. It's just a curiosity question. We do not get any income from them because we cannot collect sales tax in the ETJ. Was there ever in the whole history of this, any talk at all about their being asked to be annexed to the city and being a part of our city and our business area, et cetera? Just a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. I'm sure Anita will give us an answer when she gives her final word. My memory, Helen, which could be wrong, was that, no, the Duns did not ask that we annex them, but for a while, one of their theories was that I was somehow manipulating the situation because I and/or other elected officials within the city wanted to annex. My position then is consistent with my position now. There actually has never been support from the residents to annex either Sterns Lane ETJ or Countrywide ETJ. And the closest our city has come in the last 12 years was on Sterns, not Countrywide. Countrywide never had enough buy-in from the residents to even get into the serious discussion phase. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Boy, that's a lot of discussion going on. First thing is the 18% comment by councilmember Gonzalez. Eighteen percent is maximum allowed with variances. Keep that in mind. Either you change the policy and you don't allow any variances to come forward, or you allow variances to come forward with findings. On engineering, you know, when an engineer has to put their stamp on something and they say, we have accepted the applicant's engineering statement, you can hold the engineer to the information that they are stamping. So our engineer, Freeland Turk, has accepted the applicant's engineering statement and feels the additional parking and impervious cover can be accommodated by the applicant's existing pond. And then I just wanted to mention something. Before Ms. Dunn mentioned Miki Powers, one thing I remember, Ms. Powers used to say, the original folks from Sunset Valley would be turning in their grave if they knew we were serving alcohol in Sunset Valley. So just making some notes here that if we truly are business friendly and there's 18 cars, I'm going to repeat myself, forgive me, but I just don't understand why we're not seeing this. 18 cars on Countrywide. And you move them off of Countrywide and you move them onto the property of the barn. And there's a pond there to hold any runoff in the pond. Wouldn't that be a better solution? I understand we're increasing impervious cover. All of that runoff from that impervious cover is going to a pond now that has been engineered. And we have to trust the engineer to do their job. Thank you. And Ms. Dunn, I'm so sorry you're going through what you're going through.
Councilmember Ellet?
Yeah, I'm going to offer a suggestion here, if I may. I think it's important that both sides, and both sides have very strong opinions, you get a very, very fair hearing. And that hearing is based on council members being totally informed and aware of all of what's going on. I listened to Charles Boyett make a very, very good point, what he said. There's a data here. And do you folks have the confidence that you understand this data and render a decision that is above fact, to say the least? I'm not sure I can. I would ask the two, the motion maker and the second, that they would consider this. And I'm sure this is not going to satisfy Ms. Dunn either. But I am concerned about us rendering the decision that is based on fact, that reflects the views of all parties, and more importantly, give both sides a fair, equitable answer, whatever that answer is. And I would like to suggest that we ask for more information. And I would ask my council members, if they do agree with this, my thought, to make a list of the information they would like. I've made a note of some of the things I would like to see in order for me to be able to make a fair and equitable decision on this. And as councilmember Rosengarden said, it's a very, very tough one. There's three things I would like. We've heard something about an agreement today. Is it in actual fact an agreement? Is it documented? I'd like to see it. The second one is, someone raised that has been a list of variances given. I'd like to see that list of variances that have been given. And thirdly, I would like our engineer to be present and I would extend the offer to Mrs. Dunn for her to certainly feel that she could have her engineer present. Those are three things I would like to see to put me in a position where I can make an informed, impartial, and the right decision for the city. And I put that forward as a suggestion.
So two ways that could be handled is that the motion maker and the second could, just the motion maker could retract the motion. But another way that we could approach that would be to vote and allow a vote to sit as a no or to allow the vote, to allow the motion maker to accept some sort of amendments to her motion. Councilmember Rosengarden, I believe that you're the motion maker. Could you speak to councilmember Ellet? You both have open mics.
Thank you, mayor. I could make a motion to, I could withdraw my motion. I could also table this agenda item to the next meeting. So I'll do that. I'm going to withdraw my motion and ask that we have this presented at the next council meeting, if possible.
Thank you. And Roxy, could you confirm if the motion maker withdraws? Is that sufficient or does the second have to do anything?
Out of a bed of caution, I would have the motion maker and the person seconding. But I think the motion maker should be sufficient.
Thank you. Okay. Wanda, do you agree with withdrawing? So the motion to approve has been withdrawn. And so now I would go back to councilmember Ellet, your suggestion. And I would suggest that we go through each council member and have them list what they didn't have tonight that they would like to have in considering a possible approval to the recommendation submitted in the backup this evening. So Phil, would you go through your items first? And then I'll go to each of the other council members to see what additional things they might want.
Yes. Essentially, it comes down to three things. One is I'd like to see this agreement that Mr. Jenkins brought up. I think that's important, number one. Number two, a list of variances that have been applied for and approved or denied for this particular property. And I would also like our engineer to be present at the next meeting so that we can ask them questions. Ask them questions. And again, I would invite Mrs. Dunn, if she feels the need to have her engineer present as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, you had your hand up prior, so you have the floor for whatever. And then if you would also add to that list if there are things that you'd like, that councilmember Ellet did not outline.
I'm not sure that I have that part yet, mayor. But I just want to, before we go any further, I just want to check with Roxy on a point of order. It seems in my memory that variances have to go through in a certain timeframe. And if we don't approve them, they just go through. And I want to make sure from Roxy that that's not the case here.
Pursuant to section 4.103, excuse me, under chapter four, on the watershed development, the process for variances does not have any kind of timeframe or calendar by which it's supposed to go through.
This is not our city ordinance, Roxy. This was a state ordinance that was recently passed when I was at TML. And so that's my concern, was that we had to have resolution on them or they failed. It's a new ordinance. It was a new law that came through in the last batch.
It's related to planning and building permits. And we've met our requirement by hearing it. So this is part of the due process. They need to be heard. That doesn't mean an action needs to be taken. And actually, tabling is an action, so.
Okay, that's fine. I just, like I said, just wanted to be clear on that particular issue. That said, since I think I can, I think I can, I was busy focusing on that rather than the list for, so if you can come back for me, mayor, I'd rather listen to everybody else first before I give mine.
Thank you. And Sylvia, since we're going through this, would you, just because it has proven to be helpful in the past, would you type the list so that the council members can see it and confirm that it contains the things that they need? And councilmembers, this will be important if you wish to vote on this before there is a change in council seats, as again, the next meeting is the last called meeting of this council. So if this variance isn't acted on on October 20th, it will then shift to the next council. Councilmembers, would you please raise your hand if you have additional things that you would like to see come back next week? And then Sylvia, would you, once you have a list, if you'd put it up, just everyone can see it. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, mayor. I also am interested in seeing that agreement. Also, on the list of variances that have been given and denied, if it could be noted, how many of those were given after they've already completed what they were asking a variance for? I'm thinking of what happened with the lighting, where they already installed the lighting before they asked and got a variance. And then I'd like to see something more specific that qualifies under number one, that this would deprive the applicant, if we denied this, of reasonable and economic use of the land. And I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if there's anybody who wants to add. Sylvia, would you please read the list in case there are people on the call that are not able to see what you have up?
Yes. Councilmember Ellet requested the agreement with the city, a list of variances granted. I wasn't sure if this was just to the barn or all. He'd like the engineers to be present, both parties, at the next meeting. Councilmember Medicus also asked for a list of variances, but specifically those that were completed after they had either met all of their prior variance requests or were after the facts.
Just to clarify my point, it was variances as related to this particular property, the barn.
Okay. And then specific guidelines under criteria number one, depriving the applicant economic use of land, and then also the agreement with the city.
Okay. Could you clarify on number five? We're not stating that as a statement. Councilmember Medicus is asking that to be vetted. The question is on five. She's asking the city attorney to derive an opinion as to whether or not there has been any deprivation of economic use. And then councilmember Ellet, would you agree on bullet number three? That you're not requiring it, you're just saying that you want to ensure that both engineers have been given the opportunity? Because I don't think we can control. Because I don't think we can control the applicant, because it will cost money for them to have an engineer present. And I don't think that it's an actual requirement.
No, I, I, I agree with that statement. I was just extending the offer. If Ms. Dunn wanted to have her engineer there, she is very welcome to do that.
Right. Now, as for the city engineer, I think what all of us are saying is that it's a requirement. We need to have the engineer present.
Right.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez?
I, I would like to, I have found with the city that when we have questions that go to our officials who are not staff, I mean, you know, like, like the attorney or the engineer, that sometimes the questions they are asked are different than sort of what comes back to us necessarily. And so when we say the engineer approves something, and he's not here, we can't really ask that. And what I wanted, this engineer to be prepared for is, did you know that potentially, when you were asked, would this pond specification be acceptable and move forward? Did you know that it was never necessarily approved, that it met the specs that you're evaluating from? And so I think that's a very important question. And I don't know that we have the answer to that. But I, but I don't want them to come and have that question blind, you know? And, and I'd like to know that through inspection or something, they have said this will do this. Because if they just say, here are the specs, these specs look good, that's different than knowing, as Walter has reminded us, that there was a real problem with that in the discussion. Walter, Walter is certainly, has a better memory than mine. And I do remember, after he prompts me, that we did specifically ask the Duns, what happens, you know, when you want more parking here? And all those questions about the rebar and all that are certainly, we won't need more parking, we won't be back. And I certainly think that if I pull the video up, that I can remember Anita saying that. So, so I think that that's really important to go back and, and check, because we don't know the condition of that pond. And, and for them to just say off the specs is different than to say, when we never knew in the first place that it really necessarily worked. And so I'd like to have confirmation of that. Thank you.
So, no, I'm gonna tell you, they didn't know the pond was never necessarily approved, because I didn't know the pond was never necessarily approved. There's nothing in any of the records that say the pond inspection either failed or was not approved. I'll also add that we've had record rainfall since that, that time period, and I have not had any information either about a failure. But I will certainly ask the engineers about their inspection, or to be prepared to answer questions from the council about inspection or their process.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then I think some of what I hear Councilmember Gonzalez saying is, it's not just that they need to be prepared to answer those questions, because those aren't the type of questions they can answer off the cuff. They need to, we need to make sure that they're allowed, that these questions to be presented to them ASAP, so that they can provide written answers in time for the publication of the October 20 meeting. Councilmember Medicus, I show that your hand is up. I didn't know, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, Mayor, two things. I believe Councilmember Elliott asked for the list of variances granted and denied. And if he did-
Councilmember Elliott, can you confirm that?
Yes, a total list of variances, the action taken on those variances, and that pertains to whether they were approved or denied. So that is a correct statement, Councilmember Medicus.
Thank you, Councilmember Elliott. And the other one, on number five, I'd like number two to be added to, because I think they're just very vague in our justification. The preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property right of the applicant.
And then, Mayor, there was some other, so I'm gonna remove pond tests, because I think that's captured under Councilmember Gonzalez's. But there was a comment about pond freeboard and the impact to the Williamson Creek watershed. So I've added those as follow-up questions as well.
Yes, I think that was Alfonso that asked that question. I brought those two items up. Okay, Councilmember Medicus, I'm muting you. And Councilmember Gonzalez, I show that your hand is still up. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before I move to the next speaker?
No, ma'am, I thought I put it down, sorry.
Anybody else? And then I'll give Anita a final closing statement. Anita, you have four minutes. Anita, did you want to make any final statements or ask any final questions before this comes back on October 20th?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have four minutes.
All right. First of all, to say that that pond wasn't inspected is an absolute and total falsehood. Not only was it inspected, you, you guys hired Tom Mounds, was your engineer back then. You don't have a city engineer, although Katie Phillips liked to think she was one. You don't have a city engineer. So Tom Mounds was your representative on that, and he was working with, what's his name, the young fellow? Anyway, I forget, I forget who it was. No, not Travis Wilson, he worked for the city. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Tom Mounds was the man who inspected it. He was over there and inspected it with Ed Moore. They, they found there was some loose gravel, so they, we recompacted it. And then not only did Tom Mounds sign off on it, our engineer signed off on it. He is liable for the pond. Pond is working just fine. TCEQ approved it. So don't please tell me that this pond has not been inspected and looked at, and made sure it's working, because it certainly is, and TCEQ attested that. As for various, for variances approved for us, we applied for several sign variances. Other than that, I don't know what else has been approved. And for, did, come in and tear up the pond and repack it? I mean, I don't even know what to say. Don't even know what to say to that. And as it comes to the annexation, no, the ETJ does not provide any funding to the city. But when we approached the City of Sunset Valley in 2010, we were bringing the wastewater, we were bringing the water. We were bringing, we were up, the fire hydrant, which we already put there. And that was to provide you the ability to annex the street. That's what we were doing. We were bringing you the infrastructure, which any city would have been delighted to have. And you could annex the street, and then our business would provide the revenue stream to pay for the upkeep of that street. So that's that. And then, when the, there was a time back about a year or so, or maybe longer, that people on Countrywide Lane put in a request by, to the City of Sunset Valley to be annexed. And again, sorry, I don't mean to attack your rose, but I'm only telling you what you said. You said, those people only want free stuff. Now, I don't know what free stuff you were talking about, but that's what you said. And then that went away, just disappeared. So, let me see. And as for an agreement, the only agreement we had with the City of Sunset Valley was a watershed agreement. So I don't know what kind of agreement you're talking about. We did, we did our business plan through the Travis County. We did a watershed agreement through that. We built it, it was inspected, it was signed off on, everybody was happy, let's all go home. So that was, that was the extent of that. So there's, there's no agreement. Again, go look at the watershed application. That's all you had, belonged to us, rest was Travis County. And the City of Austin, where we put the pipe in, that you're supposed to take over in another year or so. So I can, again, I can attest to all of these. And as for our pond, the engineers said it's okay. Here we are again. If you don't believe the engineers, then who do you believe? As, as Councilmember Rosengard said, her husband is an engineer, Ed Moore is an engineer. They signed off on this. Your own city engineer said, yeah, they're, they're fine, the pond's fine, it'll do what it'll do. So you can keep arguing that all you like, and coming up with whatever excuses or whatever, but that's the reality of the situation. That pond is TCEQ approved. So it's been inspected, but on the old days times. So I don't know what else I can say to you people. It's been recommended, you can go back and even rehash it all over again, but there's nothing else to say. If your engineer approved it, mine is ready to take liability for it, then isn't that what the watershed application is all about? So, you know, so here we are now, we're back in another two weeks, and we can hash this out again. For what? I don't know anymore I can say that you didn't, and anymore that the engineers can say to you to tell you that this is fine. This is working fine, there's no reason not to approve this.
Thank you, Anita.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reitz?
Thank you, Mayor. So wow, I'm not even sure what to, where even to start on this one. To me, this is a variance request. We have now dredged 10 years of history and convoluted things with, I think this was the way it was, I think this happened, I think this happened. We have some inaccurate information out there. I think we need to deal with the facts. We need to deal with this variance as it stands. I don't believe it is necessary to go through 10 years ago what happened. I, I, I am, it's clear that it's, it is some very bad blood here. And it's very disappointing, frankly. So I do think we need to deal with just the merits of this. I caution all council members and anybody else to, when they make a statement of, I think this happened, or this happened, I would hope that you remember it very clearly and are presenting factual information. So unfortunately, now that it's all been said, we do seem to have to get into the nitty-gritty of all of this. And I, I find this very unfortunate. So I guess what I would like to see is a summary of the lawsuit that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Reitz, I agree. I don't think that any of that needed to be dredged up tonight. And I think that the situation with all variances is that you should be able to just present the variance and recognize that applying for a variance does not mean you're going to be granted the variance. There just simply is not an entitlement. And yes, now it's gotten complicated. And most of the stuff that was brought up tonight, there are very simple, staff will be able to put together a very simple, this is, this is the timeline of what happened. In fact, there probably already is a timeline, because this had happened, pretty much happens every time a situation with the barn comes before councils, that we have to go through the entire history of accusations and whodunnits. So Sylvia, the sooner you can get that out to council members, the better. And with that, this will show up on the October 20th meeting. And so now we can move on to our next item of the evening. Item number nine. Consider an act on items related to City of Sunset Valley committees. So the purpose here, hopefully we can get through this quickly, is to agree on the revised application for committee appointments, and then to agree on committee work assignments for the remainder of the year. So with that, I don't even know that we need to do a presentation. Instead, I would like to open it up for council members if they have questions about either 9A or 9B. And if, if not, let's approve them. And if so, let's do revisions that are needed in order for council members to feel comfortable approving them. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Can you hear me?
We can't.
Okay, everything just went very quiet all of a sudden. Regarding on agenda item number nine, I would recommend, you said approve A and B. I'm thinking we're approving a format, which is the first one showing the proposed format, and then the second one showing the existing format. My personal opinion would be to do one piece of paper versus two. So my suggestion would be, and thank you, both to Wanda and Karen for working on this and getting this forward, so that we could work on this and see that we have a better ideas, better version. I really like your new idea with some modifications. Instead of having one board, commission, or committee requested, put both of them. I don't know why we had three on the original, when you only could be on two committees, probably because you could be on three committees at one time. And then where Matt Linganfelter's name is, pull that down to the bottom. Over to the side, put two choices, regular member and alternate member. So on the first choice, let's say they say it's the Arts Commission. They can then check if they want to be a regular member or an alternate member. Then let's say line two, they put down Finance Committee. They can check if they want to be a regular member or an alternate member. The next, you would say, I am a, you don't need to even have the next line, which says, I'm a current member of the Board, Commission, or Committee, and have served for how many years? That's usually what's put in the Community Service, and it says right down here under Community Service, including prior committee service. So you already have it down there. Then the fourth square, I wish to serve on two committees. But if, I would change that to say, I wish to serve on two committees, but if not able to, my first choice is preferred. Or you don't even have to say that but part, I wish to serve on two committees. Boom. And it is left up to the council liaison, who is the liaison for that committee, to decide how many members they wish to have on their committee. I think that would make it simpler, without having to do two documents, because usually down in the bottom, Community Service and Experience and Expertise, you have to do it again, and again, and again. Do it once, and you could, you know, for the first item or committee that you're signing up for, you put your first experience. And then for the second one, you, on the bottom part, you put the second Community Service or experience that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sylvia and/or Matt, do either of you want to advocate for any of the adjustments that we were incorporating, just so that the council members can get the benefit of what Wanda and Karen and I had in editing this?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Matt jump in, because he's the one that has to comb through the applications. Matt?
Yeah, so Councilmember Rosengarden, we, when we met, we, I kind of proposed the idea to have one single application for each board, commission, and committee. It just makes it easier for review. I, I do agree, I think people were confused by the preferences. What happened apparently last year is, you know, some people put like, oh, it's my second choice to be on a committee, but then they were placed on the committee when they really only wanted to serve on one. So that's why you have the, I wish to serve on two committees. And I just think it's cleaner, one application for each committee. We also spoke in our meeting with Councilmember Reitz and Medicus, that you can speak to the Community Service and Expertise and Experience that applies to each committee or Commissioner or Board. And really, you have not that many people that, well, you have a decent amount that serve on two committees, but I, I know it's more paperwork, but it really does, I think, make the, going through the applications and putting them together to present to council, I think it makes it easier. So that would just be my suggestion.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, I just want to advocate for the two forms, as Matt suggested, because, and I'll give myself as an example. When I first moved here, I applied for the Arts Commission and Budget and Finance. And those are two different skill sets. And I think it's helpful to be able to expand for the actual committee on your experience. So that's why I would advocate for a separate application per committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Reitz and Matt. I think it's cleaner to have them separated. It got really confusing last year, especially being a new member on council. People had written first, second, and third choice, and then trying to go through and pick out what skills applied to each committee, and did people really want to serve on one, or, you know? And did people really want to serve on one or, you know, two committees? We haven't had the ability for people to serve on three in a while, I believe. But if they didn't get appointed to one and they still wanted to serve on two committees, then the next two in line could be assigned. So it was just really confusing. I like it clean. I don't have a problem with taking out whether they're a current member and how many years they've served. That can go in the community service because it does say including prior committee service. But I like the clean one application for each one. And I like that it's fillable online, which they hadn't been in the past. So I appreciate Matt making that so. And I think this will just make it clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional input? And then again, councilmembers, if you, the way that we could do this is that you could approve both these edits and changes separate from the work assignments, or somebody could make a motion to approve both. The second is more of a housekeeping and meant to provide clarity to committee members and their leadership. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I am not going to lose sleep over it. So I move that we approve the changes made by the recommended sponsors. And Matt? Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? And then we can clarify what edits we're including. Councilmember Reitz?
I will second.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosen Garden, were you including both portions of this motion or just 9A?
Forgive me, I'm not following along with you with 9A. 9A says committee work assignments for the remainder of the year. So what are we approving on 9A?
Part A of this agenda item is the application. Part B are the work assignments. Is your motion to approve both or just the application?
Just the application right now. A revised application for committee appointments, yes.
So I understand that the motion is to approve it as presented, but it sounds like there was consensus from at least one other person to remove your suggestion, Councilmember Rosen Garden, about past experiences. It can be entered below. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ellet? Councilmember Ellet, did you want to add anything?
No, my hand was up to second it and Councilmember Reitz beat me to it.
Got it. Councilmembers, please raise your hand if you want to add anything to this. And if not, I will call for a vote and then we'll move to the second part of this agenda item. Councilors, please cast your vote via chat. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This is to approve the modifications to the committee application appointment process, the application.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. I am waiting on Councilmember Ellet and Councilmember Reitz. Councilmember Ellet, aye. Oh, Councilmember Reitz, yes.
Thank you. Sylvia, is that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmembers, we are now on to the second portion, which is to approve committee work assignments for the remainder of the year. The assignments, as you see it, were created by Sylvia and of course reviewed by the sponsors and myself. So really, the idea here would be for the other councilmembers to make edits if they feel there are any that need to be made. And if not, to approve it to allow, again, to allow the committees, the liaison, and the staff members to be very clear as to what they need to go through this year. And in some cases, it may mean that the committees don't need to meet at all or need to meet on a very limited basis. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I didn't approve it from the beginning is because I hate that anybody could make much accomplishment on the land development code before the new council and committees are put in. So I'm not sure we want to put that in there as part of their work before November.
Sylvia, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. And it's, it is absolutely not a complete revamp of the land development code. It's more a prioritization of where we need to be heading. There is a pyramid of development and how we're going to be working through things. And the very, very, very first thing is the current and the future land use map because that drives everything. And so I've also had plenty in environmental talk about some of the uses within the zoning classifications. So it's just the tip of the iceberg. It's to really begin the dialogue.
Okay, so you're not expecting them to finish anything. It's, oh, no. Okay. All right. Thank you. Somebody make a motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I spent a disproportionate amount of my day staring at old things on the sign ordinance. And, and one of the things that we said we were going to do in January of 2019 was refer the sign code to the zoning commission. And since, one of the things that we said in that meeting is that people could come onto your property and, and say that your welcome signs and your kindness is everything signs and your my child is a soccer player are illegal signs in the city. And given, and given the drama surrounding signs, I would like to get that referred before I get off council so it doesn't get lost. And I think that what we said in January was zoning. It could be P and E. But that, I think zoning is what we talked about at that time.
So, and this was, this was in January of 2019. We talked about, well, I wasn't here, so I couldn't talk about it. But what was the discussion? I can get with you offline on that.
Yeah, they're both at eight o'clock. There's discussion on the 18th and the 22nd. I can, I mean, the 8th and the 22nd. I'll just send you the dates offline. But, but we have two different discussions and what we decided, and we said on tape that a lot of our signs that we have are illegal. And shortly thereafter, we said we weren't going to enforce it. That's what I was looking for, which is why I was wasting my life that way. And, and we said that a lot of our no trespassing signs are illegal. We said a lot of our welcome signs were illegal. We said, you know, my child is a soccer player for X, Y, and Z would be illegal. And the kindness and everything, which a lot of people have in their garden, would be illegal. Unless you could re-categorize that as a political statement. But anyway, so we decided we were going to look at that as a whole. And, and then that was when we had a lot of people and now we don't. And it's, it's kicked down the road. But one of the things we said, we were going to refer to, refer it to a committee. And so I want to make sure that doesn't get lost.
Councilmember Medicus?
I was going to make a motion to approve this, these committee assignments. I guess we could do that with it.
That would be great. That would be helpful.
I think just so the sign issue doesn't get lost, it could be another bullet under zoning commission.
Great. I think that's a good, easy suggestion.
So with that amendment, I would make a motion to approve the proposed committee assignments for the remainder of 2020 with that addition.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
So I'm sorry, we're adding signs to?
Sorry, be reviewed, the sign ordinance unto the zoning.
Okay, it would, it would go under P and E as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Add that to P and E and zoning.
Okay.
For the first.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, are you or second?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any additional input on this? Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, great. Ray Jean, I see that your hand is up. You have the floor if there's something you needed to add. Okay, and with that, I'm going to call for a vote. And then as soon as we vote on this, I'm then going to call for the vote to extend the meeting past nine, which we can't unless there is a vote to, a majority vote to do so. So on this, the second part of agenda item number nine, if, councilmembers should please cast their votes via chat. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, yes. Councilmember Ellet, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Medicus?
Motion to extend the meeting past nine.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Rosen Garden, are you or second?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers, please submit your vote via chat. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed. This is a motion to extend the meeting per ordinance past our closing time of 9:00 PM. Motion passes. It'll extend us no later than 10:00 PM, which should be more than enough time for us to get through our last two items.
Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Ellet, aye.
Great, thank you. And so with that, Sylvia, can you confirm, is Joy here yet?
Yes, Joy is on.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Joy, for joining us. We are now at agenda item number 10, which is to consider and act on the following contracts. So these are contracts that either relate to us approving a new budget or they're contracts where there were revisions that need to be made for the next fiscal year. And so there are three categories, the annual contract list, Texas Capes, and Sustainable Food Center. We can go in any order. We can do them all together. Or similar to the last item, we can break them into three separate parts. And then of these, yes.
Staff reminded me that we approved Texas Capes a few meetings ago. So Texas Capes is off the list. We need to go through the annual contract list and Sustainable Food Center.
Okay, great. There's no amendments to the Texas Cape contract. I know that we budgetarily approved it, but are there any amendments to their contracts that beyond what was approved through the budget that need to be reviewed?
No, you approved the contract as well in a prior meeting.
Okay, so for the annual contract list, we can start there, councilmembers, or we can start with the Sustainable Food Center. And I did receive a few questions where there was still a little bit of confusion from residents. Why, again, just to be clear, Sustainable Food Center exists in the City of Sunset Valley by way of a special use permit. So we, they are not a vendor. We do not contractually choose to have them here. They come to us and ask for that special use permit, similar to a carnival, a music event, an art festival, fun run. So they have a special use permit that allows them to be there every Saturday. Separate from that, we have in the past budgeted hot funds. That is what then creates the need for a contract to determine parameters for how those funds are allocated to them. This year, we have also now allocated, in addition to hot funds, we've also allocated general funds. And so that's what the contract is for. It's not for us to control anything beyond what we did in the past. It's just to determine how the budgeted funds are to be applied to the farmer's market. We didn't bring an actual contract before council this week. I envision this as being two parts. One, tonight, council being very clear as to what they want those general funds to be applied to, which will then give Sylvia and Roxy the ability to bring forward a, hopefully a very clean and simple, I would think, a one to two-page contract that gets executed. With that, Sylvia, if you would take it away and then we can dive in and let councilmembers start providing their inputs. You may not have anything to add to that, Sylvia, but the floor is yours.
No, I don't have anything to add for SFC. I just wanted to go through the, the contract list really quickly for our annual. What's in gray was items I was going to point out. Aquius Waterways is going to be going away. Carolyn is working on getting that one to end its, to an end of life point. And so we will be saving some, although I don't know how much because we do have a termination in it, but it's a duplication. And then some folks got scared with the Miller Gray. No, Miller Gray, we're also not renewing the contract, but they are still on a, a per, per item because we do have some historical still that we're trying to phase out and get from them for our new engineering set. There's some items on here that are overdue for renewal. TCQ is one of them, so I just need to revisit with TCQ. And then Texas Disposal System, you guys approved the changes at the last council meeting. So I wanted to make sure we pointed that out. We've already talked about Texas Capes. And Univista is also going to be out for RFP next year. We were, when I first got here, I think it was in discussion to go out, but they were in the middle of changing servers, et cetera, et cetera. So we put that off. But that is going out in 2021. And so I'm ready to discuss SFC. And Joy is on the call.
Before you do that, Sylvia, just because you did run through this real quick. And I do remember last year, this chart was an important one. So councilmembers, while we're on the, the first chart that Sylvia had up, do we have any council questions about contracts for the upcoming fiscal year excluding SFC? So any of the other, other contracts? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I do not have questions on the contracts. And I just want to make sure that it is noted that on the bottom page five, Emergency Management Director, be sure and change that from Sean Ford to Chief Carter.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Noted.
Councilmember Ellet, did you have any questions about the summary list?
No, I just want to make a, ask a question, get it confirmed. I think I know what the answer is going to be. I assume all of this is in line with the resolution that was passed by council, I think it was about a year ago, where we said certain contracts over a certain amount of money would be rebid every three years. I want to make sure we're just adhering to that. That's all.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that confirmation.
Okay. And so Sylvia, is there anything you want to add to what I introduced? And so SFC, the chart that Sylvia has in front of you, just for anybody who maybe wasn't here during our budget talks, this is not a new chart. This is what Sylvia and I put together to help support my suggestion that council budget general funds. So this was not, this was a way for residents and councilmembers to see, what are we currently giving? And hot funds and in-kind, the things that you see in green were the things that we felt like might be what I would consider the low-hanging fruit to most directly support the market. The farmer booth fees and the vendor health permits. If the desire, which I do believe it was the desire of Councilmember Rosen Garden, if we were to provide them general fund dollars, those two categories most directly assist the actual farmers and vendors because we are directly compensating fees that they otherwise have to pay out of their own pockets. And so with that, Councilmember Rosen Garden, do you want to say anything before I open the floor up to start allowing Sylvia and I to take input from everybody for a contract?
For sure, I want to make sure and mention that we want the contract that we can get out of the contract anytime we want, without fault on either part.
Okay. Sylvia, could you, similar to what we've done, would you jot these things down? And that way, every, all the councilmembers can look at? And Councilmember Ellet? You had your hand up?
I didn't, but while you recognize me, do we, before we move on to SFC, did we have to approve the annual contract list or are we going to do that in conjunction with this? I'm confused.
No, I don't think we need to approve it. It was for Sylvia to put it in front of you so that you could ask questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, I think it needs to be approved. I'm checking with Ray Jean. I believe it does need to be approved.
Okay. And if it does, then Councilmember Ellet, you can make the motion.
If it needs to be approved, I will make the motion to approve the annual contract list as presented.
While we're waiting. While we're waiting for?
Yes, it needs to be approved.
Okay, so Councilmember Medici, do you want to be the second to Councilmember Ellet?
Yes, I'll second.
Do we have any commentary on the approval of the contract list for the, for the new, new fiscal year? I was saying upcoming, but I realized it just started five days ago. Seeing none, councilmembers, if you would please cast your vote. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay.
Okay, Councilmember Reed, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Ellet, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye. Councilmember Medici, yes.
Thank you. Okay, and then as your, your SFC contract list, my suggestion, which is not, I'm not wanting to go to the map for this, but just to give us a very clean starting point, my suggestion would be that for the general funds, we first prioritize vendor health permits, and that we increase it from 3,500 and up at 2,000. So of the general funds awarded, my recommendation would be 4,000, which allows for up to 40 vendor health permits to be paid during this fiscal year. And then my suggestion would be with the remainder of the money that we pay for farmer booth fees, and that both of these be paid directly from City Hall, meaning City Hall would reimburse for the health permit, and same for the booth fees. And for the booth fees, that it be done in a way that incentivizes the vendor to show up, not just for one or two reimbursements, but that we bundle it and say, for example, you get reimbursed at a certain amount per week. I'll throw out $30 as a starting point. You receive $30 per week towards your booth fee, and you get reimbursed after you confirm that you have attended for up to six consecutive Saturdays. I suggest that, because I think it will eliminate in the administrative work required by City Hall, so that instead of reimbursing twice a month, they would reimburse once every six Saturdays. And it also would encourage the vendors to actually come as much as possible, to get a larger reimbursement. And so I throw that out just to be a starting point, and then open it up for councilmembers to add any, to alter that, or to add other administrative details that they would like to see in the contract. Councilmember Ellet?
Yeah, I would like to comment on that. I attended a meeting with, with SFC and their executive team, and I, I support this, this means of going about this. Because I came away from that meeting saying, the best thing we can do to ensure every success for the farmer's market, and then enhance the farmer's market, is to have more, more people showing up to exhibit, and keeping the ones there who, you know, who want to show up, and making sure this is worth their while to show up. And so I think the, the payment to the, the people in this respect directly, I think, alleviates a lot of the admin issues, and also is an incentive for both new people and people who, to stay, so that we can build upon the success we have and make this a, a great market. I also agree with Councilmember Rosengarden on, you know, any contract there should be, you know, to, you know, to, no-fault termination by either side with, you know, 30 days' notice. The other thing I would like to add, I know this is, we're talking general funds, we have hired a new marketing company, which I think is gonna do a great stuff for us. I would say that I'd like to see the hot funds that could be used to promote the farmer's market be channeled through and be the purview of our marketing company. I think we have to have synergy in terms of what we're doing as a market in the city, in terms of marketing the destination, as a destination, and I think the farmer's market is an integral part of that. And I think for continuity, and, you know, the branding that we will have to do, I think it makes sense to use the resources of the marketing company we've hired. So I'd throw that out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Oh, thank you. I would like to say that the booth fees would be done every 12 Saturdays, so in other words, that we would, City Hall would reimburse them quarterly, so that way they're not having to keep track of, have to do it on such, so frequent a time period. So every quarter, 12 Saturdays.
I think that's, like I said, I don't have any preference, I think that's fine. So the fees, Sylvia, I don't see the notes from what I said before. So the fees would be 4,000, up to 4,000 in health permit fees, and that the remainder of the general funds would be paid after 12 consecutive prove-ups of attendance. And Councilmember Rosengarden, I threw out the amount of $30 per Saturday per vendor. Do you have a preference for the amount?
Yeah, 30, 30 would be fine, because I know they get charged anywhere from, depends on who, 30 to 75, so. 30 would be fair.
So Sylvia, if you would put $30 per Saturday, and that you can be reimbursed once you've, you have enough, an affirmation from SFC that you've had 12 consecutive Saturdays, and both of these, item three and four would be paid directly by City Hall to the vendor. Councilmember Rosengarden, did you have more that you wanted to add to the notes of things you'd like to see in the contract, or terms that you would like to be connected to? Before I move to the next councilmember?
That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medici?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see in this agreement, in my mind, this is like a grant, because they are under a special use permit, and we don't govern how they do their business, but how we spend our money. And I would like us to make sure that we put in our whereas's, if we're gonna add those, or somewhere where we put in the why. Why are we granting this money? And I think that, saying something that we, the city desires to sponsor a weekly producer-oriented farmer's market within the city of Sunset Valley, so it's really clear, and that we want to encourage or incentivize vendors to increase, I believe we want to do this because we want to increase the vendors at the market, help to increase that. So we're incentivizing the vendors to continue with the market, or even come to the market if they're at another farmer's market, and maybe you're thinking they can't afford two, they could come to ours. So the why, for me, is really important. And the hot funds issue, while I am very excited about our work that's upcoming with Ampersand, and what we may be doing with the branding of our city, we've just embarked on that process, and before they're even ready to propose what that's gonna look like, or we have some kind of artwork, we're talking five and a half months. So I, I just don't think we're there yet. So I would propose that we keep the $10,000 in hot funds being directed by Sustainable Food Center to pay for the ads for the Sunset Valley market, and not for the Austin market, but just for the Sunset Valley market. And then when we have our direction, and we agree where we're going with Ampersand and the whole look of the city, I think that would be the more appropriate time to run things through that company, or whatever company we hire to execute that.
Were those your only comments? Councilmember Medici?
I'm looking at my notes here. Yeah, I think, yeah, the, both the booth fees and the health permits will attract vendors. I think the, helping with the rental issue on the parking lot will help SFC, as will the $10,000, so everybody benefits. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Medici, just as we're crafting potential contract terms, if we were to keep hot funds, if we were to follow the model you just suggested, which is to keep hot fund allocation sort of consistent with the past, at least until Ampersand gets caught up to where they're ready to even take this over as part of their active advertising marketing for us, would your recommendation be that we keep the contract for the hot funds similar to last year's contract?
Yes, except with the change that we made in the application process for the coming year, which is that that the logos be on the web pages, and not requiring they be on every single advertisement, because that would be unrealistic.
Thank you.
Under the new rules, yes.
I would add that there needs to be something crafted by either Sylvia or Roxy, a very simple paragraph for launching the two general fund items, so that SFC show us some sort of proof, I don't know if that's just a letter and a list of who they sent it to, just somehow formalized that a notification has been sent to the vendors, because if we're gonna offer this, I think the city deserves to know that all of the vendors under SFC's umbrella have been given equal opportunity to claim these two rebates. Councilmembers, do we have any additional contract terms that you would like to see come back in a contract that will be written, that will be drafted by Roxy guided by Sylvia, would come back October 20th for, hopefully for approval, so that it doesn't get punted to the new council where they're rightfully, anything that we punt to the new council, they're rightfully gonna want sort of a reset and a re-education, even though all of the candidates have been attending the last few meetings. And then, in addition to that, I would say to Sylvia and Roxy also, is there anything that you would like to receive input from, from council, so that you're not asking me to lead the contract drafting? Is there anything else that either of you would like to hear from council while everybody's together?
I, I heard a lot about measures and reporting, and then, so, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're gonna keep the hot funds process similar, and the hot fund process now says reimbursement after the event. So is that, is that what we're going to be doing?
I think yes, just for clarity in this document, if you would just provide a clean bullet list, so I would say for now, and then the motion maker can determine if they want to edit the way you've written it, but I would say keep hot fund allocation the same. I don't hear any addition of specific measures that are going to be required, so no, unless the motion maker wants to add that. Does that answer your two questions?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And can you scroll up, so we can see the top part of the list? So I think that would take Phil's number one would be eliminated because of bullet number nine. And Phil's number two is already addressed by number three. So Sylvia, the way that we've outlined this, is this something that you feel like is doable for a staff member, and is there any, are there any additional terms that would be helpful in, under bullet number one, that would make it easiest for, I assume this would probably be Tanya? Is there anything else that would be an important requirement for Tanya, so that she understands, and she doesn't feel like she's put in a subjective position of choosing who gets rebates?
No, we'll have to work the process out, but we're, we're gonna handle it the way that we currently handle rebates, because that's what this will be, so that we can track it.
Okay, the one measure that I would like to see incorporated is that I, only, I, I know the SFC already agreed to it, but I'd like it to be memorialized here, that SFC and an actual representative present to council. And I'll throw an amount out, and the motion maker can change it, but that I would suggest quarterly. And then if a councilmember wants to make it more frequently, I'm fine with that, but at least at a minimum quarterly, meaning they actually come to a council meeting, and either, and as an outlined admin item, so that it's clear to the public and councilmembers, that's your opportunity to speak to SFC. I also would like to see monthly reports of who, not how many people are shopping, but just who in terms of vendors. So I'd like to see a report provided, that doesn't have to be done in person, but I do think it would be nice to be included in the admin report, so that the residents can also see it. So just a monthly report of, this is who was at the market this month. Vendors, just vendors. And again, if the motion maker wants to take both of those out, I'm okay with that. Councilmember Rosengarden?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that on number five, that you say $30 per Saturday, not 30 days per Saturday. Later, you're gonna look at that and say, what? What was that?
What was that? And I'll go back and listen to the tape.
That's it. Thank you.
Roxy, is there anything that you would like to see added to this that will allow you to easily draft as simple? My, my main request would be that we make it as simple and short of an agreement as possible, so that it is easy for staff, SFC, and residents to navigate. I don't hear Roxy talking, maybe she can't. Oop, unmuted the wrong person there. Now Wanda has the floor. Okay, there's Roxy, you are unmuted now.
There I am. No, I, I think, I think with what I have, what you have written down, I can draft something simple. I mean, one of the questions I had was the remedy for if you don't follow the process, but the remedy is you just don't get reimbursed, the hot funds. So I, I think, I think this should be enough.
And to your question, what you just said, the remedy would be you don't get your, SFC doesn't get their hot fund reimbursement, and for the vendors, they don't get the rebate if they don't either request it in the situation of the health permit for that, they just have to request it, and it's a per year, one time per year per vendor. And then the second rebate of general funds, which would be for showing up, you're correct, the remedy is they just don't get it. So if they don't show up 12 consecutive Saturdays, now that I'm thinking as an attorney, we should probably add something that, it's 12 consecutive Saturdays, unless exclusive of Saturdays where SFC just doesn't operate. So it's assuming 12 functioning Saturdays, so if there's a holiday.
They actually hold the market.
Right, so 12 consecutive, with consecutive being, you know, events that SFC hosts.
Yeah. The, the other question I do have is, I recall at some prior council meetings, there was some issues with the advertising approval process and the reimbursement for the hot funds on that.
So I think Sylvia, she put up a question on that this evening, and then, of course, I now see some councilmembers putting their hands up, so I'm gonna see.
Hear about that, and maybe we can take some notes, and we need some direction with regard to that issue, because I do remember that being an outstanding issue, and something that had come up previously.
Councilmember Medici, did you want to add to something, or to Roxy's question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, in looking at the requirements, that you are looking at the amendment that we did to the hot fund application and requirements and guidelines that was passed by council, I think, a couple council meetings ago, but we did really beef up the guidelines. And so those things need to be taken into consideration when the contract is written, or the agreement is written. And there is a thing in there about the advertising.
Okay, so in that respect, I can basically incorporate the requirements of the amendments that were made, or the current hot fund processes. And, and then the remedy for that is they just don't get it if they don't follow it.
Right, and we always did have a reimbursement policy on that, but they have to submit their report to be reimbursed, so that was a one change in that.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Ellet, do you want to say anything else? And then I'm gonna let Joy from SFC let us know if she has questions about the direction we're going.
I just wanted to follow up and offer, and seek some clarification on your comment, Madam, about the quarterly reports. Yes, I think we, we do need those. I'd like to see them, SFC give a report that could be included in the council package that went out for that quarter. And I would, what I'd like to see is along the lines of what they provided me recently, which was done by quarter. And what it showed was the number of attendees, the number of vendors, the sales by product type, and then And then the average sales per vendor. I thought that was very useful information. I think they're already putting that together. But I would like to see that included in the package that went out to the residents at, at the, at that quarterly council meeting.
Thank you. I'm fine if the motion, if that is the direction that council goes, adding those additional things. The one, I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost Sylvia, between two and three, the who is vending is the one thing. That's the one thing that's valuable to me because I want to be able to say to residents, you have one, one beef vendor, one, three vegetable, like the, the which farmer and what the product is. So I see Phil has product type. I have who is vending. So that the, the name of the vendor and what they sell.
And I think, Madam Mayor, you're, you're asking for that on a monthly basis, right? Who is vending?
Yeah, I'm asking that on a monthly basis, which, which really shouldn't be, I mean, that of all these things should be very easy for SFC because if they're going to, if we're going to be doing this rebate program, we should have that anyway. We should be saying who is vending and what they sell so that we can confirm that they actually, that they're not just on a list, but that they actually showed up.
Correct. I concur.
Okay. Joy, what would you, do you have questions or is there anything you want to add?
Yes. So I'll be honest, I've got a lot of concerns about how we're talking about reporting. So it's my understanding that one of the proposals put forth is that for every 12 consecutive markets that a vendor attends, that they would get reimbursed for $30. Is that, is that correct?
It's 30, it's $30 times 12. So if the vendor is in Sunset Valley for 12 consecutive Saturdays or 12 consecutive markets, they would be reimbursed $360.
Okay. Okay, that, that, that makes more sense. I think what I think.
That means that over the year, they would be allowed to be reimbursed as much as give or take around, probably around $1,200 plus their booth fee.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if that's going to be enough money. I mean, so I'll give you an example, how we, how we kind of worked it on our end in terms of breaking it down is, is we said, for example, if we have 16 vendors who come for nine Saturdays at $45, that's about $6,400. And then the non, non ag vendors is about 13 non-ag vendors times nine Saturdays. And one of the reasons we were looking at nine Saturdays is the first Saturday of month is always a little bit bigger affair generally, or that's what we've tried to do to make it, whenever we bring on vendors, we try to make sure that they start that first Saturday of the month. We also have, if we have other events happening or promotions, we try to do that the first Saturday. I think what, what I'm concerned about is that this, this is causing, this is creating quite a bit of, I think, reporting and paperwork. And I'm not quite sure that that it, that it's, that it's completely clear who, who the money is going to and, and how this is all going to be reimbursed. Because what I'm, what I'm hearing, right?
So the reporting would be that you tell us, if we just look at the high level, which is just what's needed for the rebate would be you need to tell us which vendors are at the market each week. And when our administrator, our account administrator can see that it's, whether it's nine, 12, I hear you saying nine would be the preference. So let's say we did nine. She just needs to see, yep, I see that they were on nine, you know, we receive a report once a month from SFC and I can confirm that that vendor. So the extra work for SFC is that you have to confirm which vendors showed up each Saturday.
But who, who are we confirming that with? Because all of that data comes from us.
City, the city administrator. So you would send that list to the city administrator once a month. It would also be reported to council once a month, just so that we can see, these are the, these are the vendors that you have at your market. I could even see that being included in our newsletter as like, hey, FYI, these are your current vendors that are at your market. And then we would be reimbursing, we would be issuing that rebate directly to the vendor. And are you saying that you think $45 would be a better number than 30?
I mean, I, I think what, I think what I'm challenged by is this is pretty complicated information, talking about reimbursements. This is the first time I've heard of the, the term rebate. So that's, that's new. And again, it's not clear to me who. So we, so for example, Sustainable Food Center, every Saturday, vendors pay a booth fee to be at the market.
Correct.
And so I think what, in, in conversations that we've had previously, my understanding is what we would do is that we would, we would say, you know, our goal for the amount of vendors for this year is X amount of vendors and we would, our goal for growing the amount of net vendors is X amount. And then on a, on a monthly basis, we would submit how many vendors we had every Saturday for that. And that based on those numbers, for example, all the vendors would be reimbursed for, for a Saturday as kind of a thank you for, thank you for coming. Or, you know, Sunset Valley, the city of Sunset Valley is supporting this market. And because of that, you know, your first Saturday booth essentially is comped or provided by the city of Sunset Valley.
That's not what this is being proposed. What's being proposed here is that the promotion you would submit to your vendors is congratulations, Sunset Valley is thrilled to have you in their city. They want to incentivize you to keep coming. They have agreed. Everything will still function the same way through SFC, you'll still pay your fees. But if, if we can confirm that you have appeared for, as under Councilmember Rosen Garden's suggestion, if you confirm that you have been at 12 consecutive markets, they will reimburse you a flat amount of, and then whatever that is, whatever the multiplier is, if it's 45 times 12, 30 times 12, but that they would then be handed over a rebate directly from the city of Sunset Valley.
And I, my, I think my concern with that is that farmers, one, don't like paperwork. So, so them having to take on that paperwork.
What paperwork are they doing? Because that's you reporting, not them.
How do they? How do they get reimbursed? How, how does a rebate work?
So I guess the additional paperwork is that they just have to acknowledge to you, where do you want your check sent? And then we would be issuing the check to, directly to the vendor at their choice of location. So it's not additional paperwork for the vendor. It's additional paperwork for you because you have to confirm which vendors are actually at our market each Saturday.
Okay. I think, I guess to be perfectly honest, this is, this is very different than how we've talked about this, this contract. And, and I think the thing that is not clear to me is this is not actually money coming to SFC. This is money coming to farmers. And so we're not under a contractual agreement to receive the $21,970. And that, 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 that's, that's a bit of a 180 from everything that we've talked about until now.
Is there something you would be doing differently with the money aside from giving it directly to the vendors? Which is exactly what we're proposing to do.
I, I think, I think as we, as we had been discussing this previously, my, my understanding was that because we have had supporters who've done this. For example, we have restaurant partners that in January, when it's really cold outside and they know sometimes vendors struggle to come to the market because things can just be sluggish with, you know, people buying goods outdoors. Is that what we do is they say, we have a certain amount of money, we want to cover the booth fees. And so what we do is we say, okay, for these weeks, you know, vendors for, for this month of January, for example, we're not going to charge you guys any booth fees. And, and we're going to ask XYZ or restaurant who's made this offer to essentially pay for your, for your booth fees. And that, and that check gets written to SFC because we're not incurring those booth fees. And so to me, this, this acts much more like a pass through for Sunset Valley to directly to the vendors. But I think, I, I don't know that this is going to be the kind of incentive that the vendors are. Is, is going to be super appetizing to them, especially because this is so different than what we had talked about previously.
So you're saying that a vendor won't be enticed by a simple promotion that says if you simply provide your, where you'd like your check sent, the city of Sunset Valley will automatically send you a check?
I think.
Once a quarter, based on your attendance?
I think part of that is that creates a lot more paperwork for us, quite frankly. For.
What's the additional paperwork? Because if the only thing you're doing is reporting to us once a week who's at the market, the burden is then on our staff to look at that list and to count to 12. Or count to nine, or whatever the number, the punch number is, the burden is on our staff to confirm. So if you're already reporting to us, who is at our market each Saturday, where is the additional burden on you? I mean, if the burden is the letter, we could do that too. The, the city of Sunset Valley could write the letter that you then send to all the vendors to say, hey, this is a vendor-specific promotion that Sunset Valley is, is running that is to go directly to you. We want you to come to our market. We want you to be here consecutively. We want to support you in a consistent way. I mean, if, if the paperwork's too much, then our, that could be part of what we add in the contract is that Sunset Valley writes the letter and you pass it through to the vendors.
Right. And I, and I think, I think these are, these are, this is the conversation that I, I wish perhaps we weren't having at city council because I'd like other staff.
We, well, we have to have it at city council because this is the part where we need the council members. I mean, right now I'm talking, but at some point, a council member is going to have to make a motion for what terms they would like. Because this is, this will be the first time that the city of Sunset Valley is using general fund dollars to support the farmer's market. And I don't know about other council members. I do know that for Councilmember Rosen Garden, she made it very clear that her approving those general fund dollars was because she wanted to ensure that the vendors and very specifically farmers were able to know that those funds were coming directly from Sunset Valley.
Right. And I think we have precedent about doing that. That's much less complicated than what is being proposed. And I'm also concerned that if a farmer does not come to 12 consecutive market days because they end up getting sick and they have to sit out, or they're at a conference or something like that, all of a sudden their incentive is, is, is taken out. And then how, what's, what's unclear to me is how this is, there's been a lot of discussion about performance metrics or if the market is performing at, at a, at a, at a certain level. But I don't know that this is really getting to any of that. To me, this is, this is really blending, I think, blending a lot, a lot of needs or requests, but it's not really clear at the end of the calendar year, if, let's say, let's say 10 farmers get reimbursed. Is that showing that the rebate either worked or that at the end of the day, Sunset Valley has a market that they are excited about and they feel has made improvements, for example?
Okay, let me get some more feedback from council members and then see if at some point if we can get a motion so that we can at least have a working model of what terms we want to go into the contract. And then ultimately, certainly we want as much input as possible from, from you, Joy, but then ultimately we'll then also enter just contract negotiation where you guys can look at the contract and decide if you do or don't like it. And if you don't like it, then we don't have to put it up for a vote. Councilmember Ellett, you have the floor? And I don't hear you, Councilmember Ellett. Councilmember Reitz?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll come back around to Phil.
Okay. So I guess my question to you, here's what I think the issue is. And I, and I get that it's a little complex and such, and I, I, I get that. I do. And I also get the idea of it's really nice to be able to incentivize our farmers. But the issue really is that we don't have enough vendors to make this market a real viable market. We need more vendors. And my question to you, Joy, is what would incentivize you to get more vendors there?
Thanks. Joy, and I'm going to leave both of you unmuted. And that way, Councilmember Reitz, if you have a follow-up question, you and Joy can speak.
Sure. So I think one of, one, something that's been troubling to me over the past couple of months of having these conversations is, is from, from my experience, different council members as well as residents have different ideas of what a viable farmer's market is. And so what I've heard is some council members want more vendors, period. It doesn't matter what they're selling. They could be selling used auto parts. But as long as there's vendors and there's vibrancy, we want that. Other than, other council members or residents from Sunset Valley have expressed that they want to see more food vendors. Other folks have expressed that they want to see more art vendors. And I think what, what, what I'm really struggling with is there's not, we, we put together and shared, I shared with Sylvia the past quarter, I'm sorry, the past fiscal year. And if you look at that compared to our la, the year before that, sales revenue is up, vendors are up. All of the, the vendor satisfaction as well as the customer satisfaction surveys are, are really strong. And so when you, when you say, Councilmember Reitz, that this is not a viable market or we don't have enough vendors, that's hard for me to know because there's no kind of target put out there. And, and furthermore, if we do put a target and we say, well, we want, right now, we're averaging about, let me have it here. I have it in front of me. Let's see. Let, just placeholder, I'm going to put X. If we're averaging a certain amount of vendors per week. And then we want to say, well, we want 50 vendors per week. That, you know, there's a lot of effort and, and discussion that needs to go into that because I don't, I don't know that we can to run the market as we have been running and what have, what customers have been saying that they want a market that has primarily food vendors at, saying that we want to get up to 50 vendors. I don't know if that's possible in this scenario right now. And furthermore, when we're talking about during COVID, we're in a pretty difficult situation because we've lost vendors. And we're trying to, trying to bring those vendors who've maybe dropped off during COVID to rejoin and then, and then come back. But I think we're looking at maybe having total of average about 30 to 35 vendors per week. But what I'm hearing is that that is not, that is not what you guys want to see.
So when I was there a couple of weeks ago, you had 27 vendors. And I'd also visited the Barton Creek and they had 60-plus vendors. So one question I have is, do we need to look at a different day like Sunday? I know at one point, there was some discussions. I don't know whatever happened to that. But I do know the difference between the two markets was dramatic. And and they weren't, and they were about, I would guess about half and half food and half and half other vendors. But I'm not, I, I, I'm not sure on that though, at your market, at our market. So all I know is I, is the direct comparison. So one question is, do we switch to a Sunday? Would that be better? And what would incentivize more farmers to come to our market?
Well, I can, I can tell you, having, having more paperwork and having something difficult is not going to be an incentive. I can, and, and the reason I say that is speaking from years of experience. Having farmers, just getting them to tell us their, their sales data or give an estimate at the end of the day, having them fill out the paperwork we need them to just to be vendors, it's not, it's not easy. So anything that adds an extra layer So anything that adds an extra layer of paperwork as an incentive and it's not clear cut is is not going to be an incentive.
I can, I I can understand that. Um, would very reduced booth fees help?
Yeah. And 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 part of that, the reduced booth fees, though, the boot, with the booth fees are charged because that is partially how we're able to pay for our staff, to pay for everything that goes into. And so I think that's what some of my confusion is with the way that we're now talking about a rebate. Is if you, if if you guys want to, want to lower the booth fees, that's essentially lowering the cost of doing business. And somebody's gonna have to pay for that.
Well, I I think we're suggesting that we would help in that area.
But it, I get, and I I thank you for that. What I'm hearing is that you guys want the the fees to go straight to the vendors, not to SFC. And so we can't run a market if we're not collecting any booth fees. That's part of, that's part of the model. But what, again, what I'm hearing is you guys saying you want the booth fees um reimbursement to go straight to the vendors. And then if you want to lower the booth fees, h- how does one run a market without that revenue?
Wait, back up, Joy, and Wanda, you still have a hot mic, too, but back up, Joy, because she's not saying both. She's not saying reduce what you're taking in to run your operations at all. So where would this alter your operational budget? If we're reimbursing farmers directly in a way that we've never done before? So we've never done this before. So how is anything changing about how you all are paying for your employees or your operations?
I think by creating a way that that we would come up with what would be the best way to incentivize and and let us come up with the proposal of what makes sense in terms of what we've seen, in terms of.
Joy, can you just answer that question, though? If we've never paid booth fees before and we're not asking you to reduce the booth fees, how have we in any way changed your operational overhead or your operational expenses?
Because what I'm, what I'm hearing right now is it is not clear to me how the rebate is going to work and how that's going to create extra additional reporting duties for our staff.
Then if the only thing you're reporting to us is that we are now going to require you to tell us once a week, and you don't even have to report it weekly, you could report it monthly, we just need a confirmation of which vendors attended our market. Is that excessive paperwork? I mean, I think you guys must do that already. You must go through the market each Saturday and confirm who showed up.
Right, we do that, and we're also, you guys are also asking for quarterly um reports. And then furthermore, it's gonna be, the burden is going to be on us to communicate the rebate to the farmers. And so if the farmers want to know how that works, they're not gonna reach out to City Hall. They're going to call SFC and say, how does this work? Or I don't understand how this works, or I did not get my rebate, I don't understand.
Okay, so if, again, if, and I feel like there's multiple things you're saying here. But if the first one, just to go back to what when you were talking about that, we've never done this before. So we're not in any way changing, again, we're not changing your overhead. We're not asking you to hire a new staff member. We're not changing anything about how you operate. We used to only give you hot funds only to be used for marketing. This year, we're suggesting that we give you less operate, uh, less marketing money because we're trying to alter our program to now provide direct money to the, to the farmers. How are we changing your operational budget by? We're not asking you to reduce your booth fees.
No, you, no, this 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 particular thing is not, that is not changing our operations. My concern is that this is a lot of detail and a lot of logistics to figure out and additional new reporting. And I'm not quite sure what the goal on the other end of it is.
So what is the only reporting we're talking about? So again, council hasn't approved anything. And when we talked the other day, I did warn you. This is what this is gonna look like. You have to have thick skin because what you're gonna hear is five elected officials throwing out ideas. And just because people are throwing out ideas, that doesn't mean, I mean, at this point, another council member could say, I just want to write him a check for $20,000. That could be the vote that wins. So right now, we're just allowing elected officials to collaborate ideas of how they want um the funding to to get through to the vent, the the vendors.
So Mayor.
The only additional, if the only additional reporting you're asked to do is to report who has attended and to give them one instruction, which is if you want this free money, all you have to do is show up, but you need to tell us where you want your check cut. You think that's too much paperwork?
No, so so that that, I think it's a lot of things that have been said, so if I, if I look into.
Two things, so not all the things, just that. If those are the only two requirements that we're connecting to the rebate is that we need you to announce the promotion and request that they give us an address.
We, we can do that.
Okay, so what you're saying is the other stuff might be too burdensome in terms of staff load and the resources that you guys have internally, which would be the quarterly reporting and some of the other stuff. You're saying that those requests might be too much.
No, I I I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I think if if I may kind of put it all together. So so we put, we do the, we do the monthly reports to you guys about who came. We make sure the vendors know that in order to get reimbursed, here's how that works. Here's the contact at at the Sun- at the Sunset Valley City Hall. This is how you do that. Um, we make all of that available to vendors. I'm, if we fast forward to October 6, 2021 and and or even a few, let's say, a few weeks before this, and we're having a similar discussion and and you guys say, Joy, you know, only 10 vendors actually wanted a, wanted a rebate. That doesn't look, that doesn't look successful. You guys failed this year at at recruiting new vendors. I think that's where the disconnect is, is 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 that relying on vendors to go get the incentive may not be a good indicator that the market is successful or not.
So Joy, what would be the incentive then? What do you suggest?
So what what I suggest is that vendors receive a free, essentially their booth fee is comped, there's a rebate for every first Saturday that they that they attend. And we've, we've come up with, I've got that written down in front of me in terms of what the, how the math breaks down for that in terms of ag vendors and non-ag vendors, because their booth fees are slightly different. And that comes out to about $12,000.
And that's one Saturday a month?
Correct.
What happens the other three weeks?
I think we're, I think we we did the math assuming that um some vendors are not gonna be able to come every Saturday for 12 months. There's gonna inevitably vendors miss Saturdays.
Yeah, I would see that, too.
Yeah, and so I think if if that were the cadence and we could announce or have some sort of, you know, I don't want to say marketing campaign because it it's more internal, right, with the vendors, but we can say, hey, vendors, Sunset Valley um City Council is actually gonna pay for the first Saturday of every month, and vendors get into the habit of that. I think that is really powerful because it's something that happens every single month. And then if we can overlay with that to say, also, vendors, if you all are going um to get your your permit, your health fee um this year, Sunset Valley will be waiving that for you as well. That, to me, packaged together, is really clearly articulated to vendors what what the incentive is there for them.
Okay, everybody wants to speak right now, and I don't want to cut anybody off. Councilmembers, we are at 10 o'clock, so what I'd like to do is allow each council member to speak. Um, thank you, Joy, and I, clearly, no decisions have been made here. So I also don't want you to walk away feeling like you actually got the will of council because you didn't. We haven't even gotten to a point where we have a draft contract that our council members agree with. So this will definitely reappear um on October, on the October 20th meeting. And then I would suggest that we sort of pick up where we are and that, Joy, certainly, if you have any of those, sort of the metrics that you've internally put together that speaks to that question Wanda just asked, which is, what would you propose? And actually put it in writing so they can see how it works. Um, and then council members, very quickly, is there anything else that would be helpful for you all to have um as we bring this back October 20th, um to pick up where we're leaving off tonight? Um, and I, Councilmember Gonzalez, I got a message that you were trying to speak, but I don't see your hand up, but I'll start with you. Did you want to? Oh, now, hold on, you moved, there you go. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you want to start?
Yes, please. Um, I I think part of this is uh that the money is no longer going to SFC, and I think this needs to be said out loud, and and that 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 can be part of the challenge here uh for for SFC. And so I just want to say that out loud. Uh, the other part is, when you're talking about the presentation that you were talking about, since my thing to say that was a long time ago, uh, what what is the amount of vendors that you're doing your math on for your first, for for your proposal? Joy?
Oh, you want me to answer that? Sorry, I didn't know if I was.
Yes, please.
I am toggling over, so the proposal that I am looking at, we are assuming that 30 vendors will be getting health, health permits. Um, that's based on the amount of vendors who would need those because not all vendors need those.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then in terms of vendor fees, we're looking at a total of um 19 vendors on average being being reimbursed. Um, that, you know, this is, this is all kind of an average, right? Because, for example, Wanda, I think you mentioned recently that there was 27 vendors um the weekend that you went, and so some of that fluctuates.
Okay, well, my concern is that that isn't, that particular plan isn't growing anything. And and so um, so that, so that's kind of, uh, I I think, I think if that's the goal, that there's, there's sort of, I hear you saying one argument is that, how will this have grown it? And I don't see your proposal doing that. I mean, there's a disconnect for me, so that's, that's my two cents. Um, and and so it's, I I just like us all to be working together towards the same end. And and I, and I hear your frustration, and I certainly, if I was in your position, I would feel frustrated. Uh, I I can certainly see that. Um, but but at the same time, um, whatever plan, I think we should all be going in the same direction, and I don't hear us doing that. And so that's my concern. And so what I'm hearing everybody say is that next, next September, we want a successful outcome where we've grown the market, whatever our plan is, and that it's accountable and the people are happy with it. You know, that's all we need, is everybody needs to agree that that we're all going in the same direction, and that's what's gonna happen. And and then we see if we were successful or not. But I don't, I don't see the components for that where the math that you're presenting is gonna get us to that end. And and I just want, so that's, I've been listening without talking. And that's what I've heard, is that we all want to be with a better market in next September. And that you want to be able to say, this plan got us there. And when I listen to your math right now, I don't see the numbers having increased. I don't see um the vendors having increased. So I just want to say that, and I'm quiet now. Thank you.
And if, and if maybe I could, um, I appreciate that. Um, Councilmember, what I would like to propose is that we provide a proposal. Um, I'm I'm looking at an internal document that we put together precisely for this meeting. And um, that's what I would like to propose back to, back to you all and then talk through why we're proposing those particular numbers or how we came up with that math. I think that would be really, really helpful.
I I I'm totally open and don't really have a dog in, a a dog in this sort of hunt here. I I I want people to be happy. I think that's a reasonable supposition that we're better off next year than we are this year, as long as everybody agrees. And I don't disagree with anything my colleagues have said in particular. And I can certainly appreciate your position of, we had this much money and now we don't, and it's, and and we're, and we have more labor. And so I I um, I I certainly appreciate that position. But but what I want to see is that whatever we come to, we all agree that it's successful next September. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we're going through just the council members to get their notes for what they want at the next meeting and to make sure Joy's clear if there's anything that's expected of her. And then we will be closing the meeting because we are now six minutes past when we are required to close the meeting. Councilmember Medicus.
Thank you, um, Mayor. Um, yeah, it's getting late, and um, I I don't think we've agreed on what success looks like. And it, for me, it would have been helpful if we did have the proposal from Joy to look at. Um, but we do have some thoughts and that we've compiled on paper. And I would like to see um SFC look at those and think about those and come back with a proposal because I don't know how to run a farmer's market, that's not my expertise. So I would like to hear from FFC what really would incentivize the um vendors and how that process could work and um some, some ideas of what we could all agree on, what success looks like. The market is now at so many vendors by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, if we uh kick in this money from the general fund, then we'd like to see X number of vendors and what categories are, something more specific. I think we can separate out the 10,000 from the hot fund. That's for marketing, that has its own criteria. Um, but we have some work to do on uh using general fund, and it's new for us. So uh, I I think we need a lot more work done on this, and it's too late to hash it out right now.
Yes, and Joy, still, also, if you have additional, as you continue to go down this journey of talking to the different elected officials, if you have even a new idea at this point. So maybe your suggestion is we set goals in line with Councilmember Medicus and Councilmember Gonzalez. And maybe the the rule is you don't get the general funds till you meet certain mile marks. I mean, I think we really, that, again, that to the point that Councilmember Medicus just made, we're, we're open to different suggestions. But all of our elected officials feel very responsible for uh general funds. It's different than hot funds. Councilmember Elliott?
Yeah, thank you. I I just want to make a comment, and I know it's late, so I'll be very brief. Uh, the the these suggestions or thoughts and ideas weren't developed in a vacuum. Joy, uh, myself and Councilmember Rosengard, I've spent, what is it, an hour and a half plus on the phone with you and your team last week, which we appreciate, and I think we all have the same goal. How do we make the market more successful? Uh, I think you got, you, you, your team, you know, in conjunction with throughout the idea, we have to get more vendors and we have to keep the ones that we, the loyal vendors there and make sure they stay. We put together some suggestions. I don't think it's a plan, it's some suggestions that that does that. It minimizes the workload for you. And it, you know, the question you said was, I don't know if this is a big enough incentive for the, for the, the attendees. Well, if I look through the reports you provided, which I I appreciate you providing us, the average amount uh uh taken in by a vendor on a daily, uh, uh, on a Saturday is about $300, $350. What we're proposing here is something of the order of $1,200 to $1,400 plus waiving or giving them a rebate on the um health permit. So maybe $1,500. That, that's the equivalent of five days' worth of revenue or one month plus of revenue that they would get by attending the thing. It seems to me the only thing that has changed somewhat in the direction of this is now we're saying we'll cut the check to the farmers and and uh uh and the attendees, which requires no effort on their behalf other than them taking the check and cashing it. And we're only asking you to provide us a list of vendors each Saturday, which I'm sure you have because you guys do do detailed reports, and keeping that tally, and every month you say, here's the results of four weeks' worth of attendance. I I'm confused because I think this was offered in the spirit of what we heard, or or my path was certainly, and I think that's true of my colleagues here, was offered in the spirit of what we heard from you and your team that devoted that time to us on that day to come back with something that's gonna really, really improve this farmer's market. More, more vendors and keeping the ones that are loyal there and giving them the incentive to stay. I I I'm shocked that we can't, you know, craft something around this that makes sense. I I really am. I look forward to any suggestions you have coming back. And again, I think we're all united and the one common goal is, how do we make this a better farmer's market? I believe in farmer's markets, I think we need one, and we just want to make it better. We really do.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosengarden.
Thank you. Uh, is there a way that when a farmer comes? Is there a way that when a farmer comes to set up, they have to sign in or punch a card? So if they get 12 punches on the card, proving that they were there, you turn in that card, that's it? And we could make those cards just simply a little plastic or laminated card that says, okay, week one, two, three, four, you know, through 12, and they have to prove that they were there on that date, and that's our reimbursement. That's pretty simple. Just an idea there. Another way to make sure that someone was there is you take pictures. For instance, I have a property that has a pool, and the pool man cannot leave without taking a picture before he starts work and before he leaves. He has to take two pictures, so I can see the before and after. That proves he was there. He can't just say, I was there and did the work. He has to take a picture before he can sign out on the app. So ideas like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any additional input from council? And this is really specifically, is there any additional information you want? Councilmembers, do you want to see Roxy attempt to put a contract together? I hesitated having Roxy or Sylvia do that, because I didn't, and I'm going to unmute council members, I didn't want to run afoul of council members saying, who and how did you guys determine what terms? And after listening to tonight, I just don't feel comfortable leading the city attorney or city administrator in drafting a contract, because I don't think council has yet decided how they want the terms to look. Nope.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
I think we need to determine what success looks like, and then I'd like to hear the proposal from the farmer's market as to how they can accomplish that.
Okay, great. Then we'll take all the input tonight and come back to revisit this at the next council meeting. Sylvia, Roxy, is there anything else that you need before I call the meeting?
No.
No.
Could I have a motion, while everybody has hot mics, could I have a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Oh, move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Medikus, and a second from Councilmember Reitz.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. I heard no nays. Melissa, I didn't, if you'll either...
I actually texted it in, I chatted it in, aye.
Thank you. So we have unanimous vote there. We will end our meeting tonight at 10:14. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.